June 26, 2019, we have Bruce Freed, Joanne Laut, Bob Watts, Tilly Vangelista, myself, I'm Harry Lockettier, and of course John Cashwell, our planner. Without any further ado, the first things on the agenda are the vouchers. And if anyone will hear them, minutes? Well, we can do minutes. Do you make a motion?
Yes. I move we approve the minutes of June 12, 2019. Any discussion?
Aye, second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June 12 with the following corrections. Bruce, anything?
No, I'm good.
Joanne?
No corrections.
Nothing? Tilly?
I did.
Okay, I thought a couple too.
Okay. I just thought what wasn't there, our discussion that we had. 196 West Main Street, somewhere in there should have been put that the...
What page, first page or second?
Yeah, page one.
Page one?
Down at the bottom.
Okay.
Public hearing, 196 West Main Street.
Okay.
It's just not there, any of our discussion regarding, the board's discussion about accepting applications was totally, we had quite a lot.
Is there something you want to add in?
Yeah, I thought it should be added in and...
Do you have a quick phrase you can put in there that can sort of summarize?
Well, she wanted to look at it again because that was totally eliminated and I thought that was, I didn't write out anything at the time, but I just thought it should be reviewed again. And then on 51, on the next page...
William Holt says, "I submitted the drainage calculations to Larry Graham."
He did not submit them.
That is a mistake and I don't believe he did. He said he had them, but he hadn't yet.
I will, he said.
Yet done it.
Yeah, I will submit.
Okay.
Okay. Down on 91 on that page, they, she wrote in title, title will remain private property. And I think it's the road, I think he kept calling it a driveway. It's not a title.
It's a court, it was a court, wasn't it?
Yeah. He was asking for a court, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe it was the court will remain.
The title, I don't know. I don't think anything about private property was in that. So I think that should be corrected. Do you remember the road?
I think they're talking about the roadway, the fee.
Yeah.
The title and fee.
Title and fee.
The title in fee of the underlying roadway. I think that's what they're referring to, but we can make it clear, the road will remain private property. We can make that difference, right, John?
Yep.
That's about it.
Well, it's perfect where I sort of pick up.
Did you get them all, John, because you went out?
Andrea will get them on the tape.
Yeah, she'll get them on the tape.
Other than that, they were very good.
The only other one I saw was, well, two I saw, line number 121. That's on page three. The second sentence, "It has acted as," which should be an earthen buffer, not an earth and buffer, but an earthen buffer. And the only other big thing that I saw is that on page five, between lines number 200 and 214, we deal with Carlton Drive. And Carlton Drive actually is a hearing and should not be under Planning Board. It should be moved up above Planning Office and follow 55-65 Central.
It's a public hearing.
Because it's a public hearing. Somehow it got mixed in with Planning Office stuff.
Yeah.
So, Tilly, I'm going to leave it to you, how you want to deal with this. There are more things to do here. And we don't have corrections to the section that you referred to at the beginning that's missing information?
Yeah, I just think if she could look at it again and see because...
Okay, in that case, you want to withdraw your motion? And change it to hold off the...
Until the changes have been made.
Until the changes have been made, that would be the review.
Okay. I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
My second.
One second.
My second.
Bring it back to the next meeting?
Right.
Okay, by unanimous consent, it's decided that we will bring this back, the minutes of June 12, 2019. We'll deal with them at our next meeting. Good. First order of business, that was a total failure.
Not a total failure. There's no bloodshed.
It wasn't a win. Wasn't a win there, Bob.
You want them accurate, right?
Wasn't a, absolutely. Accuracy is important. Accuracy is the key. Dealing with the vouchers. Here we go, vouchers.
I make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
To... For six.
You'd like to make a motion for all of the H.L. Graham Associates technical review...
Yes.
Vouchers, all of the vouchers?
All the vouchers, one through...
One through six as shown on our agenda?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
I'm second. Many.
Second? Second. Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Bob. And...
I thought I beat him out of it.
Did you beat him?
Tilly beat me.
I heard.
See, that you weren't going to say anything, Bob.
I heard Rob. I heard Bob, sorry.
Get the quick, Bob.
I succumb to peer pressure.
This is going to be so much fun.
All right, all right, all right.
Here we go. All in favor of...
We've got to break you in.
I know, obviously. They're out of practice. All in favor of approving vouchers, 1 through 6 as shown on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. What about the Gay House Media Act? Can we have a...
I make a motion to pay Gay House Media legal ad for erosion and stormwater public hearing in the amount of $113.56.
Second?
Second.
Second is made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nonheard, motion carries. Town plan reimbursement for mileage, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to reimburse John Cashwell, Town Planner, for reimbursement for mileage, $422.58.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a discussion.
Oh, you're good.
The college at the Holy Cross.
Yeah.
When was that and did you bring us any materials or, I don't remember any comment about it, did I?
Yeah, there was a state housing economic development conference.
Affordable housing, is it?
Governor, yeah.
Any materials, new ideas or...
Well, it was a statewide conference having to do with affordable housing. It was one of those conferences that was on the evening news.
Yeah.
I'll dig up the info on it.
Yeah, that would be great to keep us...
Yeah, probably be good if you could email that out. If you could have Andrea scan it and send it out to us by email, that would be great.
Did anybody, did Paul answer, anybody in the Affordable Trust go with you?
I don't think Paul was there. Yeah, I'm not sure who.
They should be in on it.
It was really regional planning agencies that were there and commissioners.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm glad you intended.
Little tough place to get to, but you've been there a few times. Went up one way, the wrong way.
I heard there's a good breakfast place in Waverly. You got to tell me about that.
You guys should compare notes. Definitely should compare notes.
He'll have to come down. We'll go there before I come to work, all right?
Parkin Lot is right there.
Meet him here tomorrow morning. Moving on to correspondence, Town and Newbury Planning Board.
We didn't actually vote on that.
Oh, we didn't vote on that?
No, we didn't. We talked about it.
Oh, okay, sorry. My apologies. So we're still holding on, Jones? The reimbursement, all in favor of paying the reimbursement? Say aye.
Aye.
That was for the entire year, Tilly.
Right.
So make sure you get paid, John.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I already signed it. Town and Newbury Planning Board.
One of those crazy road trips.
Sometimes you have to take them. Doggy daycare in Newbury and zoning board of appeals in Georgetown for an accessory apartment at 13 Parish Road. Any comments, questions, concerns? Moving right along. Folks, I'd like to take a little bit of a straw poll here. I see a lot of abutters. If you're an abutter, not a principal, would you raise your hand, please, for me? And, okay, there's quite a few. Were there abutters for 68-70-10 Street? Raise your hands. Okay. What about 554 North? And 51 West Main? Okay. John, would it be in the interests of...
Three to sign.
The abutters?
No, no, I meant like...
Would it be totally out of order to mix up the, we're under no obligation to take them in this order, are we?
That's correct. Yep. So, you know, just to, for the audience to...
People might want to get home.
That's right.
As opposed to us, where we like to stay all night long.
Oh, we love it.
In that case, are we all signed, 3-6? All 1-2-3, everybody?
Yep.
So what I would suggest, if the board wanted to, it would take up first order of business being 554 North Street?
It looked like...
Or 51 West.
It looked like, it looked like 554 North, had the most people. It appeared that way, anyway. Okay. I'll take a motion to open 554 North Street, if somebody would.
So will.
Motion's been made to open up the continuation of 554 North Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joanne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? So opened. State your name for the record, sir.
My name's Richard Williams with Williams &amp; Doravis. With me tonight is John Dunleavy, the project proponent. And because there were so many issues raised at the last meeting and so little time to discuss them, I thought that the best use of the time tonight would be to go through the...
I'm sorry, excuse me, what is this, Rich? This is information that we did not have a week ago? This wasn't distributed?
This is, this is what I'm going to go through tonight.
Okay.
Is this, Rich?
Pass them back, guys.
Is this your response to Larry Graham's initial period review report?
The one that we didn't get yet?
No, we got, we got Larry Graham's initial report for this project. We just haven't proceeded to the point in the second one. I know it is.
We didn't get that last week. We won't deal with that tonight. Everything needs to be submitted the week before so that it can go in the pack for everyone to read, not brought in the night.
Okay. We received the letter from Larry Graham and the letter from the abutter and we did not get a chance to talk about it at the last meeting. And when we were dismissed from that meeting, the suggestion was that we had a lot of changes to make to the plan and I don't want to make changes until we discuss the changes because there were a bunch of open items that were in that letter. And we need to discuss them as a, with the board and get some direction so that we can change the plan and not do it over and over. So that's the purpose of the meeting tonight. And this letter is an outline of what I'll go through, but if you don't want to have the letter, then that's fine, I'll just read it verbally and go through the items from Larry's report. If you have Larry's report, it would probably make sense to pull that up.
What is your expectation of us tonight? What are we going to be doing?
There are, there are items in the report and discussions that were brought up at the last meeting that we didn't get to discuss. And we need to discuss them so that we can provide an updated plan that is in concert with what the, I guess, the majority of the board would like to see.
Mr. Chairman, do you think perhaps we could just get the answers from the abutters that commented at the last meeting?
That might be a good idea to hear from the abutters.
We already heard from the abutters. We didn't get to speak at the last meeting. I'd like to have a chance to speak.
I want, that's what I said, the answers. If he would respond to their questions.
The questions they brought up at the last.
That they brought up last time.
If that pleases the board, go for it. Sounds like a great idea.
Okay.
Well, the abutters raised general questions, some of which are in my, specifically in my discussion tonight. So I hope that in my discussion, we can answer the abutters' concerns.
John, you don't have a soft copy of this, do you?
Of this?
Presentation.
No, not this.
Okay. At the, at the last meeting and in Larry Graham's report, it was suggested or questioned whether or not we were filing as a court. We are in fact filing as a court. And then there was a suggestion that the planning board may want to add the driveway from the lot that fronts on North Street to the court to avoid having the driveway opening on North Street. And I wanted to have that discussion with the board. We assume that adding that third lot to the court would make it not a court in that then we would be filing under a different application, which we don't want to do. So I wanted to address that comment so that we can move forward logically here.
Just to move the discussion along just a bit, I'm sure everybody remembers Larry Graham's report where he questioned the number of house lots and why it was being brought in as a court. He alluded to, but did not say that it should probably be a lane. It's a little bit of a question. In my mind, I see this as a court only because the third lot doesn't have any frontage, doesn't meet the definition of a lot, the one furthest to the left there. So in my mind, it's going to end up being a court one way or the other, whether you move the driveway off of North Street or not for the existing house that will be raised. I don't see, at this point, you have yet to show me that that actually fits the definition of a lot.
What fits?
The third one.
This one here?
No. Go left.
This one?
There you go. That's the one.
Well, we will. It meets, our updated plan will meet zoning. It's not, it's not a question that I need to get answered to move forward because we have an updated plan that meets the lot with. And we will submit that, but again, I don't want to, I don't want to be submitting plans and redoing plans.
Would have been nice to have it this evening. Really would have been helpful. Please, move along, please.
So the question is, does, would the board like to see us add the third lot to the court and have that access and still consider it a court? Larry Graham is saying that the planning board should weigh in on that.
Well, we do have to consider whether this is a court or whether this is going to be a lane. And when you add that third one, it's a lane. And so, straw poll, Tilly, what do you think? Yeah? From North Street or from the, what is it, Barryway? Something like that? Is that the name of this? Barryway, the proposed name?
I think going off of Barryway would be better, myself.
I agree. I just, I think that having, you know, less in and out from, from North Street would be better.
From Barryway? From the proposed court?
Yeah.
In the court. Lane. Joanne?
If it could be possible, yes. Make it from Barryway.
Right, so we're only going to go from Barryway if it will be a court because going to a lane changes the width of the layout and changes all, all of the requirements.
So why are you asking instead of just showing it on the plan?
No, we're showing, we're showing what we're proposing. Larry Graham said the board should weigh in whether or not they want to allow the third lot to come off that as a court.
I get it, Rich. I understand. And you're from three of the four, five members of the board, more than a majority, that they would prefer to see it coming off of the proposed, the proposed new way. And if that, in your definition, causes it to be a lane, then it's a lane. But if you choose not to do so, then it still looks like a lane to me. I don't see the definition of courts and lanes hinging upon where the front, where the access comes from. It's the creation of...
No, it says provide access to two or more, more than two lots.
It's the number of the homes on the lot.
This doesn't provide access to that lot.
I wish we could pull up the definition, but evidently we can't.
That's a moment. I mean, the definition is clear. In accordance with our regulations, a court provides access to what, not more than two lots.
Correct.
Anything more than two lots, but not greater than five, is a lane.
Correct. And we're proposing a court that provides access to these two lots. This third lot will be accessed from North Street and that's the way that we'll go. We would only change the access from Barryway if the planning board was intending to grant a waiver for more than two lots in a court.
Wasn't the other, Rick, wasn't that the other question was the access from, what is it, Barryway faces the one that's across the street?
Yeah, well...
It doesn't, is that the same issue you're talking, referring to?
No, it's not, no.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
The next, the next item is, we provided an access easement to this strip of land. Our intention, unless the planning board is going to require it, is to remove that easement based on the comments that we've received at the last meeting and in writing from the abutter. That was, that was a request from the Conservation Commission when they were walking the line, the wetland line that is. But because of the abutter objection to that, we're going to take that off the plan unless the planning board says we want it.
As everyone may or may not know, that is a very narrow 40-foot strip. Is that a 40-foot strip?
This, this strip, I think, is, it's either 40 or 50.
And it provides access to what's known as Driftwood Farm, which was purchased by the town several years ago, many years ago. The actual access on the CR for Driftwood Farm is at the end of Wells Ave. So it has an access, even though that access has yet to be improved and there's no current signage there. Presume that will happen soon at some point. However, this is unnecessary. And according to what we've heard, the holder of the restriction, which is Essex County Greenbelt, is not desirous of it to the town.
Okay, so I think we're all on the same page there.
And the planning board cannot require, grant these. We don't have that much awesome authority.
Is it possible just to have a path from the houses that you're proposing, the lots that you're proposing, just a path?
It's not our property to build a path on.
Where that, where the, where you've got the green dark green for the...
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have rights in that. Nope.
Okay.
That's owned by, by someone else. It's owned by the abutter and it's got a conservation restriction on.
And the town is the abutter. Correct?
Yep. The, there was a question about whether this road was going to be public or private. We're intending to keep the road private unless the planning board is desiring us to have it become public.
Then who's responsible for the plowing and the maintenance?
The town, if it was public.
Right, but if it's private?
If it's private, then...
The homeowners. The homeowners association.
Just speaking as one member of the board, I have no desire to add to Pete Dirkie's snow plowing load.
Although there is a, there is a bonus that we get basically for mileage from the state.
For how many rows we have?
Yeah, for chapter 91.
For what, 60, you know, 600 feet.
So the next item is regarding the water and the hydrant. And I haven't seen anything from either the fire department or the water department stating whether they, whether they want the hydrant up at the houses or they want it here. We will do either. And if, if the board desires, I mean, we did get a letter from the fire department with some comments, but not that. I can reach out to them if it's something that the board would like me to do or if it should go through, through the planner. I'm happy to do either.
John, would you feel comfortable approaching Chief Fred?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. In all likelihood, where's the, where's the closest existing hydrant? Showing in your plan?
Yeah, it is.
Looks like it's more than 200 or 300 feet, right?
Yeah, but we're proposing to add one at the, at the intersection.
So the only question at this point is, and you have no problem adding one at either location?
Right, we can either, what we have proposed is two services down the driveway. If, if he wants us to move the hydrant, then we would just eliminate the services, pull the hydrant up here and pull the services up there. It's six of one, half dozen of the other for us.
I could just say that this isn't the first time that question's arisen. John, maybe you could hit something in writing from the chief?
Yeah.
That will clarify that, not just for the...
I know, I live on a common drive that's about this length and there are no hydrants on it. The services come, come from the, from the street, they're individual, three individual services. So it's been, it's been done before and approved like that before, but it's not the same water department and...
I was thinking, don't they say 500 feet?
Yeah, we've got less than 500 feet to the hydrant, whether it's, whether it's here or here.
Yeah, but where is it on the outside? When you add that to what you're proposing, how much is that?
We're proposing a hydrant here so that it will be less than 500 feet.
Most insurance companies like to see under 400. Something to keep in mind.
Is it?
Let's put it on the list, John.
Absolutely. Stay with the chief as to say.
There was a question about adding streetlights. There is a streetlight on the, on the light pole to the north already. There's a light pole here with this, with the streetlight on it. There's another pole here. If, if the board wants, we can add that, we can add another light or approach the light department and see if they'll add another light to that pole. We're okay with, with just having that light. It's really what the desire of the board is.
At this point, I don't believe the board has chimed in on your waiver as far as the location of that driveway, excuse me, the roadway, whether it should go further up, further away from the existing web road. So difficult to say at this point.
Okay. We'll leave that till after we discuss the waiver then. We have, I'm not going to get into the drainage part of it with the, with the board. We've answered the question about, about the treatment chain and meeting stormwater management. And I assume Larry Graham will, will respond to that with his agreement or non-agreement.
Is that it, Rich?
There was a question about how this pond was going to be maintained. We are envisioning a homeowner's agreement between the two houses that's going to maintain the driveway. And in that will be the maintenance for the stormwater system for the roadway.
Pretty difficult.
Yep. There was a question about drainage from...
Drainage, we should probably deal with drainage.
Yeah, so this, this question is a little bit different because we have a drain pipe that's on our, on the private property that discharges from the end of this out to a loc- that discharges from the end of this out to a location south of the driveway. And the suggestion or, or comment from Larry Graham was, why don't you put it out in the street? And if we do that, it would need to be, we'd probably need some feedback from Peter Durkey, and I wouldn't do it unless, unless the board wanted me to. I think we can leave the drain in there and save the wall. There might be some trees that go on the private property, but there would be no public trees removed.
So that pipe, Rick, is draining to the pond that's out closer to north?
Well, it drains to, to a point on the lawn.
Does daylight?
Yes, the daylight. The culvert crossing the road is here. The pipe discharges two hundred feet away.
Do you know how, where is the pond, the lighter green or the darker green?
Yeah, it's in here.
That's it. So it's go, it's going to reach there. It's helping it in.
What's that?
That pipe, drainage pipe, is helping to fill in the-
Yeah, but no more than, no more than in the existing condition. There's no more water going to the pond than in the existing condition.
And you've done that calculation?
Correct.
Great.
That sounds like something we'd have to put off until we hear Larry Graham's next review of it.
So that leads us to the question about the offset from the road across the street. Our, our opinion is that because there are only two lots here, it's essentially a driveway, and there is very little traffic and very little chance for, for conflicts with, with the road across the street. It's, it's similar to having a driveway across from a driveway, or a driveway across from a street. It's, if you drive up North Street, there are situations like this all up, all up North Street. We could, if the planning board wanted, we could move this road over, it would be closer to the neighbor. We think that this is the best location for it. Larry Graham has said in his, his letter that he doesn't see a problem with it given the amount of traffic, and I agree with that. If the planning board was, was still concerned, we could get a, an opinion from a traffic engineer.
So the question is whether we'll grant the first waiver that you've asked for. But before we get to that, are there any other waivers? Was there something in here that Larry had mentioned about a waiver that you didn't ask for? Or are you confusing that with another one, John? Is there some, one other one here?
I thought the most outstanding issue he brought up had to do with the amount of access. Lots that are going to access off the court.
Whether it's a court or whether it's a lane.
Yeah. The other thing he did bring up is the width that they're proposing for the court as opposed to what the regulations require.
Right, regulations require it to be eighteen feet in width with two-foot gravel shoulders. And how, how wide are you proposing there?
We are proposing fourteen feet with, with three-foot gravel shoulders on either side, which is consistent with the last two, that's, we didn't do it just out of the blue. It's consistent with the last two courts that were approved in Georgetown. And, and that's what we went with if-
So are we under obligation to make the same mistake again? Are we under an obligation to make the same mistake?
You're not, you're not under the obligation to do the same thing. I don't know that it was a mistake, I don't think there's been any, any issues that I'm aware of.
Not yet. Time will tell. We'll see. At any rate, anything else?
I think we should talk about that, I think we should, because-
We, we can always bring it up, I would suggest that we show it as an eighteen-foot wide on the next iteration of the plan, because that's what the regulations are. Eighteen feet wide with two-foot, I believe it's two-foot gravel shoulders on either side. It's a two-foot difference overall.
Oh, I get it, I, I understand.
More in line with what the fire chief would prefer to see.
What did the fire chief say?
The fire chief calls for a twenty-foot wide access.
What they want is a twenty-foot clear width, and I've met with the fire chief on, on this issue specifically, and he is fine with fourteen feet and three foot on the other side, so if it, if we're, if we're making a decision-
Maybe we can get that in writing.
And I'm, and I'm fine to do that.
Maybe we can get that in writing.
If we're making the decision based on the-
Yeah, you know, that, that particular issue in the way it's been written to the board in the form of recommendation, the fire departments throughout the country want to require twenty-foot in width roadways as their access point.
It's a national code, isn't it?
However, they're not the jurisdiction.
Right.
The authority, it's the planning board.
Absolutely.
Designing and voting for the width that they are amenable to. They're just recommending, but they're not the permitting authority.
Yeah, my, my thoughts with Chairman is this bylaw or regulations for courts, the whole setup is a waiver to subdivision requirements. So you're already getting quite a good deal here, and I'm not-
Well, that's fine, it's really not a waiver, it's the, it's the requirements that are in the regulations.
I think what he's trying to say is, if courts and lanes didn't exist in our regulations, that would be a twenty-six-foot wide roadway surface, fifty-foot right away.
So that's my feeling about that. And that's, that goes true with lanes as well.
And that's the, I think what she's trying to point out-
And I'm, I'm okay with that, I mean, we, we're, we go into these things knowing what has happened before and what's in the regulations, and that's how we, we operate. But the, the push throughout Massachusetts is to have less pavement. So when, when we come in and we have a lot of pavement, we get, we get criticized because we have too much pavement, and then, so we try and have as little pavement as possible because it has, it has the least impact on the environment, according to-
And you're not the only developer that comes in and they hit the, they hit asphalt right away. How about any other LID development opportunities in that project?
We're doing all LID.
You're going to be planting, you're going to do trees, you're going to establish anything else? Gardens, drainage gardens, are you doing anything else in all?
Yes, we have, instead of having catch basins and piping, we've got infiltration trenches, and we've got reduced pavement and gravel, and those are LID techniques.
To the road.
To the road, yeah.
Yeah, nothing else, no, the whole project there is. You got, you got a pond on there that my kids skated on, and there's nothing, is there blockage there? Is there reasons why that pond exists? Did you do any of that?
While the pond exists, we can't, we can't change that.
It's, I mean, you already made that determination?
We can't, we, we're not allowed to, to work within a hundred feet of the well. So we can't, we can't work in here.
You can't determine where the water's coming from.
We know where the water's coming from, it comes from the watershed, which comes this way. But we can't, we can't change the pond, and we can't-
So you're not going to the Concombs at all?
Nope. We can't work within a hundred feet of it, we're not allowed to, even if we go to Concombs.
Is there anything else, Rich? You'll be coming back to us with, with upgraded plans?
I don't want to upgrade the plans unless we have a clear direction.
I think we've given you as much direction as you're going to get. The onus is on you to present to this board, and this board makes the determination as to whether or not they will or will not grant the special permit. You only need four votes in the affirmative. Are you all set? I'd like to take a butter comment now.
Okay.
Are there any abutters for this project? This is five fifty-four of raised, I see raised hands now. If you have a mind coming up, sir, and you have to state your name, and please come have a seat with us. You have to state your name and preferably your address for the record, please.
So my, oh, sorry. My name is Andrew Clark, and I own, my wife and I own a property that abuts, I guess, so basically be to the west, it's not Oregon. It just keeps on shutting down.
So what's your address?
So we actually own two parcels, our house is on thirteen Wells Avenue, but the parcel that we own that abuts this project is a land, I, I believe it's a landlocked parcel, and I think it's, it may be like identified as zero Wells Ave. It's a, I think it's about a six, six and a half acre parcel. So, you know, I, I'm not too familiar with what you take into consideration in determining whether or not you would approve something like this. But I just wanted to bring up my, my own personal concern. You know, we purchased the property that we did originally because of the undeveloped nature of that surrounding area. I understand that folks have a right to use their property within the limitations of the bylaws and other laws and regulations. But I believe that there is a detrimental effect to this area when someone's allowed to add additional house lots. Sounds like perhaps not completely consistent with what the bylaws originally intended, which is why I think they are requesting all these waivers. And, you know, I think that, I probably speak for most of the folks in the neighborhood when I say that, you know, this is not what we hoped for, we don't believe that this in any way improves the neighborhood. We believe that, you know, that the original number of houses in the area makes sense. It's a, it's a wooded area, and we intended to keep our lot wooded. I think nobody really, I haven't heard anyone who's in favor of these additional houses, and, you know, for what it's worth and your consideration, I would say, I don't think that it provides any improvement in the neighborhood. I'm not sure it actually provides any additional benefit to the town.
What about public good? Does, in your opinion, does it add to any public good?
I mean, I, I personally don't see how this adds, I, I think that, I think that the main intent here of the owner of the property is to create a development, make money off of the project, and sell it off. I don't really necessarily see that that is benefiting anyone except for the owner. No, I don't think that this in any way provides a benefit to the public good. In fact, I think that, particularly with Georgetown, that public good is probably better served by maintaining woodlands and undeveloped areas and keeping, you know, open land open and not increasing the number of house lots. I think that there are probably plenty of other examples of municipalities that went down the development road, and I'm not sure that it really ended up being the best thing for those municipalities. Some of those are right around here. So that's, that's my personal feeling about that. You know, I guess the other question I would have, and I'm not sure if this is even, you know, it seems maybe contradictory, but, you know, our, I believe our parcel is landlocked.
The parcel you were referring to?
Right.
Can you show us where it is?
So it's, well, it's, it's to the left, so, so there's like the, the short-
Do you have the, the locust map?
Yeah, so it'd be the-
Thank you.
What's the name?
Clark.
Yeah, so it says peace.
Right.
And what, you said you own two parcels?
Oh, yeah, so the, the other parcel that we have is, it's, it's really just this corner is shown right here.
Okay. Oh, okay. And does that have frontage on, that would be Wells?
Wells, yeah, that is, I think we have a, maybe a hundred-foot frontage on Wells. I don't know off the top of my head exactly what our frontage is.
And that's got a home on it?
That's correct. The thirteen, not the larger parcel, but the thirteen Wells has a home on it.
And you, you're, they're on, they're in common ownership?
That's correct, and the deed, it's called out as two separate parcels.
Yes, but now they're in common ownership.
Right. So I don't know if that, so I guess, I'm not sure if it is a landlocked parcel, I'm not sure what the definition of a landlocked parcel is.
It's not landlocked to me, but-
Okay, I, I didn't know that. So I guess my question was, and I'm not, and maybe that answers the question. There was a lot of discussion earlier on about providing an easement to property owned by the town, which ultimately, I think, didn't end up being necessary. But is there any way or a mechanism for us to request that an easement be provided to our parcel there?
An easement be provided to your parcel there from this projected, well, actually, the gentleman does bring up an excellent point, and I can't, I can't cite it. I don't know the number, but we are supposed to look at projections of roadways for all of the parcels.
Well, it's parcels developed, it's got a home on it.
Well, not the parcel we're talking about.
That's an interesting point, I, I take your point.
He was talking about easements to the Concombs land, right?
It's all, we, we are surrounded by wetland.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, whereas it abuts him, so there is no ability to access, you can't work in here.
So there'd be no way to project the road out through that?
There'd be no way to project, there's no, there's no work allowed within a hundred feet of the wetland, so this is the limit of work.
That is your work, that is the wetland? It would have to cross the wetland.
That's not the wetland, but the wetland's out here, this is the buffer zone, can't work from here out into the west.
Your property abuts the wetland? The parcel that you think is landlocked, abuts the wetland?
Well, I'm not sure, because he was just showing another parcel, when you were gesturing, you were pointing to a different parcel. Our parcel's off to the left. So I, I, I'm not sure if it, it's not the one that has the compass of Wells on it. It's the one that has, I think it's like a hundred and something foot.
Oh, this guy, yeah. You still, you still can't get there because you can't work in here. This is a special setback for the Concombs, they don't allow work in that zone, so.
But does that, does that preclude an easement or just a-
That would preclude the roadway.
Right.
And the roadway extension that we're obligated to look at to possibly project to that backland that you're talking about that you own, it's, it's not conceivable because of the wetland.
Okay. All right.
But thank you for bringing it up.
It was, it was just, I was curious about that.
We should look at those every time there is a roadway.
Like I said, we have no intention of developing that parcel, but nonetheless, we are aware of the fact that it doesn't have frontage on any roadway directly, and so I thought it would be worth asking.
Neither did the two of those that they're proposing. By creating the court, they create the frontage.
Yeah.
That's why the court is being created.
Okay.
They're creating frontage from nothing.
There was also, I think, a little bit of discussion about the source of the water for the pond that exists on the south of this project area. So there's a brook that flows through our property directly onto, well, I don't, I'm not exactly sure if it actually gets onto that, that property, but it flows directly to the pond. And that's been, as far as I know, that's been a constantly flowing brook for over a year, maybe past year and a half or so. We have seen it dry up on occasion in the past four and a half years that we've actually lived here, but most of the time it's flowing.
Is that on your six acres or your?
It crosses it, yeah.
Goes right over.
And, I'm sorry?
Well, there was just a question earlier as to where the, what the source of the water is. I think that's probably a significant source of the water. I don't know how that factors into any decision here, but I just thought it would be worth mentioning that.
Do you, on that parcel, have you any creatures on there that are protected or that possibly could make it on this property that is being proposed?
I think that at one point, this was designated as a, like a nest bee habitat because of salamander. I think there was a salamander that was on the endangered list. I think there was a salamander that was on the endangered list. I think it's been, it's since been removed from the list or some, for some reason, it's no longer protected in that way.
You haven't seen anything, though?
Well, I mean, we've seen plenty of wildlife out there. So I'm, I'm not an expert on salamanders, so I don't really know, or any other wildlife. There certainly is quite a bit of wildlife out back there. I do think that if portions of that property were cut, houses constructed, it, it would change the dynamic. There, there's a fairly large wooded area that includes this and I think at least two other parcels in addition to, or maybe, actually, it's probably more than two, it's probably three or four other parcels. And then that's in addition to the land that's owned by the town. And any development of any of those parcels, I think, would reduce that, the quality of that habitat. One last thing I did want to bring up, since I have an opportunity here. I think that, I'm pretty sure that our, our parcel is within the Zone Two for the drinking water supply for the town.
For Newbury?
I'm not sure which town's Zone Two it is. I've just looked at the map and I have seen that it's indicated it's within Zone Two.
It's not a town.
We can't pull that up.
That's, that has, yeah.
So.
Zone Two for Highfield would be down Paris Road, right?
Actually, we may have included the Zone Two for Newbury in, close to this area. I'd have to see it on my map, but we can't pull that up right now.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's some.
I'll be sorry, but certainly something to look into.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something that needs to be considered when you're talking about developing an area. I mean, if it is within a Zone Two.
Well, it would in the most circumstances for industrial use or something like that, but residential dwellings are exempted.
It doesn't prohibit home structures.
Okay.
But it certainly is something to consider, to keep in mind.
National Habitat, that, that, that's on the computer, you can.
You can pull that up right on?
Charlie, can you pull that up?
On our own.
There's, there's no habitat on this property.
Well, I just need it for the file, Rick.
What's that?
I just need something for the file to prove what you're saying.
We're not pulling anything, stop looking. It's just, it's not working.
It's just not liking us tonight, huh?
It's not.
What a shame.
Yeah, it is a shame.
All the night you need it.
It's like the old days.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing else, thank you very much.
If I could just, you know, as a town planter, just so you do understand,
our subdivision regulations allow for courts and lanes and roadways to be created on land that requires subdivision, you know, roadway construction. People can subdivide their property in accordance with local jurisdiction, state laws, and constitutional rights of ownership and development. So, you know, this isn't something that's a prohibited idea. It's an allowed idea and only allowed subdivision plans can come before the board for board action.
The board's making a decision on this, as to whether or not to approve it. And I think that public good is one of the decision points, is that correct?
It's one of the findings we have to make before we can say that this is an approvable special permit.
So I recognize, I understand what you're saying, and I assume that that's the case coming in here.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I also am under the impression that it's not a guarantee that they are able to do this.
You're right. Because this is a special permit. Special permits are not automatically given.
Right.
You need, you need several things to meet that requirement, to be granted. So because it's a special permit, we have more teeth in the game than.
Yeah, and the final say isn't the planning board, because it could be appealed by the owner and it could end up in the Supreme Court of the United States if they went that far.
Mm-hmm. But there are a number of waivers that are being requested. And if this board did not grant those waivers, then they would have to come back with a fully qualified plan for our court, for court. And at that point then, the board still would have the, the onus of agreeing whether or not it is acceptable to them. And it's a special permit. And if it were to be denied, or if it were to just simply not achieve enough votes to pass, which is four out of the five, then, then it fails. And of course, the applicant has every right in the world to, to appeal within 20 days or something after the, after the decision's issued. Just like if it's approved, abutters have every right to appeal. It goes both places, it's America. Everybody's free to appeal.
Our, our job is to make sure we do the best job we can to arrive at a rational, correct decision that may not be appealed by anyone. Not everybody leaves the room completely happy and nobody leaves the room completely mad, you know, because we've done our job and we haven't given away the store. We've arrived at a decision that is equitable, reasonably equitable to everybody that's involved.
And those abutters that are within 300 feet, all the way around that property, have the heaviest jurisdiction of approval or not approval. So if you're within that category, you, you would have a right to go to court if that need be, if you were that upset, you know. So that's why it's, and you've lived there how long?
So we've only been there four and a half years at this point.
Yeah. So you know the land better than we do. We're not down there. None of us live there. Did anybody live there? No.
Well, thank you, Andrew, thank you very much for all your comments. Is there anything else you'd like to say there? I believe there's other folks that.
Yeah.
Was there anybody else that wanted, from the, from the public that wanted to make a comment? Sir, could you state your name for the, for the record, please?
Frank Lono, representing South, and tell me, in a butter, we will reserve, I'm going to be real brief.
Oh.
We'll reserve our right to make comments, but I think one of the key things we haven't heard, one public benefit to be articulated throughout any of the presentations, and I think that's a major concern.
We're missing a public benefit.
But.
We'll look into that.
Public good, but we'll reserve our right to make comments at the next meeting.
Well, if you see a public benefit, let us know, will we?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Philip Cosman. 528 North Street.
I'm sorry?
Philip Cosman, 528 North Street.
Hi, Philip.
I stand with my fellow neighbors and the comments that I made the last time that we met. I have yet to see tonight anything presented that's in public interest. I see where we're adding maintenance items, but I don't see anything where, anything that's changed since the last meeting. So that's what I'm interested in. I want to see some kind of development that's going to show these things, you know? That's, that's what I want to see. Something that's going to show the public interest. Georgetown's interested heart.
As a planner, I could probably point something out.
Okay.
They're proposing to build two new homes and.
But I haven't seen that tonight.
But, you know, some people may not think of that as a public benefit, but, you know, it's always in the news that, you know, there's a need for housing. So, you know, housing is built for people to live in. Housing isn't built to remain empty and not provide any good for people. And that's what land and what they're asking for is all about.
Just do it the right way. That's what I ask for.
The other thing everybody has to.
That it's in the interest of the public.
The other thing everybody has to realize is that not everybody who owns extra land, more land than a lot, a required lot size, you know, not everybody is looking to develop that. Some people like to preserve that land and they do things to, you know, grant the land, you know, permanent easement, conservation easements. But there are other people that want to develop lots, subdivide property for family members to build houses or to sell. They've invested in the land, they want to subdivide it, and they want to create roadways and frontage and, you know, create buildable lots.
Let's just do it right. Let's do it right. Because I hear fancy terminology, I hear some fancy words about having blacktop, right? I, I've been in the commercial roofing industry for 25 years. And just like blacktop, we have black roofs. And in the north, and in studies that have been shown, right, universities, that black roofs are better in the north than they are in California and vice versa, right? So I understand the blacktop theory. It's a lot of mumbo jumbo. There's a lot of proof out there. If you need me to provide it, I will be more than happy to provide some of those studies about blacktop in roads. There's also a thing about safety. I believe that if the fire department is asking for a 20-foot wide road or 18-foot and two-foot of gravel on either side or whatever that's proposed, it's for a reason, it's for safety. So what happens, and that's what I'm talking about with maintenance, what happens with that gravel five years from now, right? What happens to these ditches and these culverts or whatever they're proposing? Who's going to maintain that in five, 10, 15, 20 years, 25 years, right? What happens to that? Where's?
Actually, Philip, I'm more concerned about the 14 and the 12-foot ones that we've, that this board has approved that will grow in, will become.
That's, so that, okay.
Or may become a problem in the future.
I stand corrected, but that's, that's what I'm getting at, is where, where is that? That's what I want to see. I want to see where, where are we writing something or where is something being proposed that's in the interest of the public, safety and good of Georgetown? So this doesn't become a snowballed thing 10 or 15 or 20 years from now. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to comment about 554 North Street? Board members?
No, not just anything further?
No, not till we talk with Larry, with Larry.
Station.
Well, Rich, you don't have to come back up, but I hope you've had enough input to bring back a proposal at the next continuation. And once we see that proposal, we'll send it to Larry Graham. And, well, we'll take a vote to send it to Larry Graham or not. And at that point, we'll be, we'll be rolling right along.
All right, I appreciate it.
Took two orders of business before we closed.
Sure.
The applicant has asked for an extension for a final action.
Oh, an extension of time? Yeah, we need to.
They completed that.
We need a Form H?
Yeah, Form H.
Can I get a motion to allow the Form H, a Form H, which is an extension of time for decision? And I would imagine that goes to the third quarter, September 30th, I would assume?
That's correct, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move we provide a Form H to be filled out and require it to be filled out for 554 North Street for an extension of time to September 30th.
Motion, is there a second?
I second.
Motion is made by Bob Watts, seconded by Joanne. Out. A discussion? We go with it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But the record shows the motion carried unanimously. And Rich, I think you, have you already signed that?
Yeah, he did. You have the original.
Oh, is the original in here?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, gonna make me put the glasses on, actually. I know, I gotta get it here. I'm, I'm working on it, boss. Working on it, boss.
It's the second to the last one? Second to the last page of that package?
Here's 103.
Second to the last one.
Oh, second to last? Oh, wow.
Penultimate.
Penultimate. This is the last. And, oh my God. Here we go. And, oh thou scribe, do your damnedest. And while I was working on putting, doing all that scribey stuff, I'll accept the motion. John, what are our next few meetings? What are we looking at? How does August look?
August 14th. This, this one could be continued, date specific to the August 14th.
August 14th. I'll accept a motion to continue the public hearing to August 14th.
For this particular one?
This particular one, absolutely.
I second.
Could you make the motion? Was that you make, did you make the motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing until August 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
One minute. I think you need to sign this. Either that or we just extend it to somebody else. We'll just hand that over to Rich. Let him, Dayton, sign that, please. And so, motion, so if you're in a butter to 554 North Street, you're not going to get anything else in the mail. You just have to know to come on, what was that?
August 14th.
August 14th.
Same place, same time.
Same place, same time.
Thank you.
Same baton.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
And that is it for.
Two-minute bathroom break.
Four minutes.
John, what's wrong with this thing?
Do we need a formage?
The most serious, most serious thing to discuss is your timeframe. Your attorney, and I'm sure she consulted with you, has given this board until July 15th. We meet July 10th, which is a week from tomorrow.
Do we need a formage?
Yeah, we have a formage, but, you know, we really got to get serious here. We only have a meeting once in August. We have one in July, one in August.
September 30th. Maybe we should do December.
Oh, that's, that's, that's a good point.
I guess I'm a little confused, so I apologize. July 10th, you do have a meeting, is that correct, John?
That's loaded up, though.
And Nancy asked by the email that she sent to me, that she said she spoke to you, and that there was no problem in getting on the July 10th agenda if the board continued it, and we would be ready for July 10th.
Well, she must have been mistaken. So this is 51, notice of extension. Oh, yeah. No, this is incorrectly filled out. You're going to have to fill it into one of these. This is, this is set for July 5th, extension of time for July. We don't do extensions of times except on...
End of quarter.
End of quarters. Yeah, this is, this was incorrectly filled out. Nancy filled it out wrong. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have this one here.
That's a shame. We'll have to do it again. John, do we have one we can fill out tonight for, well, September or December?
Yeah, I can have one.
So we can stay on.
Yep.
Here in the back.
Yeah, okay. Let me go print one out and conduct the hearing while I'm...
Sure, we'll keep going. I think I saw a bunch of other hands over there.
Yep.
And...
I'll be right back.
Yeah, okay, that's junk. That one's junk. All right, we'll fix this. We'll square it up. We'll get it all squared up. Don't worry. We'll make sure it's all fixed. Are there any other butters that wanted to say anything or bring up anything? No? Okay. Great. In that case, what we need to talk about is the affordable housing component. I was of the understanding that perhaps the affordable housing, someone from the Affordable Housing Trust would be here, Diane Toomey?
Anderson, Diane.
Diane Toomey? Anderson Toomey? Is Diane here? And, no, she's not here. Interesting. Have you come up with any further information about the, the component for the affordable housing?
Nancy McCann handles that.
Oh, Nancy's going to handle that?
Yeah.
And Nancy's not here tonight. Okay. Well, let's wait for John then. John will bring back the, the formage. We can get that signed, and then we can continue. There's no more...
Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking about the last meeting. We were so busy with four projects that we were rushing through.
Who was that night?
You had, you had changed the roof line, and then you had colored it, was it painted it gray? Is that the plan, the last one?
Yeah, the last one that we showed you, based on suggestions from some of the boards that were in front of, and actually, a couple of the neighbors, after one of the conservation committee meetings, actually really liked it. We wanted to soften up the back part facing the pond and facing the neighborhood. So one of the ideas that came up was, when you look at the front, you notice that each unit has a set color unique for that unit, and that continued in the back on the original plan. So on the new plan on the back, we softened it and made that all one color, two colors without in front of me, which surprised me, to be honest with you. Really worked and looked nice. It really made a difference in softening, and it was really nice to have some of the neighbors that commented on it after one of the meetings.
Are any of those butters, one of the people that we're supporting of this change that are present? No?
Doesn't seem like anybody's here.
Nobody is here. And the other thing is, is, if I recall, it was a flat roof in the back?
No, the, the townhouses are almost... Pyramid's the wrong word, but the roof lines don't go straight across, so it doesn't look like one big mass. So each roof line is a, a, a little lower.
So it's kind of leveled?
Yeah.
I don't know, it looked, it looked flat to me, so it's not a flat roof because...
It's not completely flat, no.
I wouldn't support that in New England.
It's not completely flat. We don't, we don't, when we don't have to do completely flat roofs, we don't want to either.
Well, don't, I don't want any part of it flat, because you're only asking for problems.
So John, what is this? Because, again, I was told I was coming in and asking for a continuation tonight, and that it was all worked out.
Yeah. I don't know what you were told by who, but...
I was told by Nancy McCann, who said that she spoke to you and also emailed to you. So I'm just going by what I was told.
Yeah, that, that, that formage was incorrectly filled out. We only go by quarters.
Yeah.
She had the wrong date on it.
We really have to deal in realistic timeframes. The, the most realistic timeframe we can offer you as a board to try to arrive at a conclusion for this project is September 30th. That's the extension request. That's the next quarter.
So are you saying that when we're asking for an extension right now, a continuance, that you can't see us until sometime in September?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
No. This is what we're dealing with. July 10th, are you going to have revised plans prepared in accordance with Larry Graham's...
We'll be ready to make a new presentation to the board on July 10th.
Are you going to submit, you're going to have to submit any materials for that?
Well, normally we try... Normally, we try to submit a week before that's what the board likes.
The materials for that meeting are next Tuesday. Are next Tuesday. So you have to, from right now till next Tuesday, you have to submit all documentation having to do with that, that meeting.
Right, well, that was one of my questions that I was going to ask on the continuance, where the holiday is on Wednesday, if we could submit on Thursday, where we had been promised a number of times for the peer review, and we just got it today. So would that be...
The holiday's Thursday.
The holiday's on Thursday.
Holiday's on Thursday.
We're off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The most likely scenario, and again, I mean, I know I'm, I'm not, I'm not the best when it comes to time. The most likely scenario where I don't see, where you don't come in and say, we, again, have not been able to meet the deadline because of one thing or another, your fault, our fault, whoever. August is the meeting to go to. July's a busy one. August, whatever, what's the August meeting? What is that one?
The August meeting already has 196 West Main Street.
Right.
It has 55 Central Street.
Okay, that's it. Then it's the next meeting. It's the next meeting after that, too.
What happened to the second meeting in July?
There is no second meeting in July.
We're on a summer schedule, and the board already decided. Now, the board can decide whatever it wants to do, but we have scheduled for July 10th and August 14th. Thereafter, it's in September.
I think September's the way to go.
So is the only problem, I guess my question is, is the only problem for July 10th, you're worried about us not being able to...
You're not going to have anything done. You're going to have revised plans done and submitted by next Tuesday?
But if the holiday is Thursday, like, what does it matter if you got it on Monday or if you got it on Tuesday? What would it matter? That's what I was going to ask the board.
Because the packets for the meeting unfortunately have to be out the door on Tuesday of next week.
So if we're on the July 10th agenda, you need, you need the stuff on Tuesday? Is that what you're telling me?
This Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday next week.
If you're going to submit anything, if you're not going to submit anything, then...
You're not going to submit anything of, of value that we'll be able to look at. Let's sit back, take a breath, get all your ducks in a row, get all your reviews done, get all your, get all your enditions done. We asked for a lot of things at the last meeting. I'm not seeing them here. You could have printed up some prints. We kind of thought we were going to be looking at some revised plans that we could comment on.
We would have had no problem coming with the full team tonight and making a presentation to this board, without a problem. The reason that we did not was out of respect to the board and to John, because we just got the peer review back. So the board would have said...
What does that have to do with you presenting new plans that you promised you were going to do?
Because we have, we have no idea what Larry is going to say.
Let me, let me just point out one thing.
As we don't.
Exactly.
Larry doesn't have a vote. That gentleman over there has a vote. That lady there has a vote. This gentleman here has a vote. Tilly has a vote, and every now and then I chime into. Larry has no votes.
I agree 100%.
So when this board asks for a new set of plans, and you promise to bring them to the next meeting, this is that next meeting. I'm not seeing the plan.
Hey!
I'm a little bit underwhelmed.
Well, you know what? I'm not afraid to speak up, so I'm going to tell you something.
I'm glad.
Okay? At the last meeting, okay, what you and I had a conversation about when you were sitting right there is, quote, I said to you, we'll have no problem being ready for the next meeting as long as we get the peer review by the end of May as promised.
What does the peer review have to do with the plans being revised the way this board asked?
If, if we only have to do the plans on how this board asked, then why do we spend $3,000 or $4,000 for a peer review? Because in the skimming through of the peer review already today by me, it doesn't match exactly what the board wants. So if you're telling me, hey, come in here with just what the board wants, I'll be glad to do it. 1,000% easier.
You just gave us your answer, though. You said that you can't do everything that the peer review says and do your plans together. You need time. You need more than until next Tuesday.
No, you're putting words in my mouth. That's not what I just said. I said, we didn't come in here...
That's what it sounded like.
No, we didn't come in here because we just got the peer review today. That, that's the reason we didn't come in here with the presentation.
So you need time to absorb the peer review and make your new plans.
And I'm telling you that we have enough time to absorb the peer review in July 10th. And my question on asking for the continuance was, what day next week, because of the holiday, do you need the stuff? That, that was my only question.
Only John can answer that. He's the one that knows.
And it sounds like it's Tuesday.
Now, you know what? Every developer has the same story. You're going to get everything into us for the proper deadline for the meeting, and it never happens. It doesn't.
John, I have never missed...
It's not just you.
I just went through 15 meetings in the town of Ipswich in less than six months and met every deadline. Like, that's unheard of. 15 meetings in a town usually takes a developer two years. So I don't think it's fair for the board to say to me that we're not going to make it.
Let's give him until Tuesday to get paperwork in.
That would presume that we're, we're doing this, we're doing this...
That's right, on, on next...
In our July meeting.
That's right, that's a good point.
I think the best thing would be the September meeting. Give it plenty of time. For all we know, we might not even have a July meeting.
That is not fair.
July gets very hot.
Mr. Chair, that is not fair to make us wait until September. All due respect to the board.
It's not a question of fairness. It's a question of practicality, and this board meets at its pleasure. We're under no obligation to have two meetings a month. We can have one meeting a month.
You don't have to have any meetings a month.
Every other month.
You don't have to have any meetings a month.
That would make you laugh.
I understand that.
So, with that said...
But why should we lose two months? Because a peer review that we paid for took... I can show you the string of emails, and I don't think John is going to, why, sitting there? We were promised the end of May, then Larry promised it the next week, then he promised it the next week, then he promised that we're going to get it the next day, and none of that happened.
Sir, with all due respect, I've been in this business for 40 years, and the construction business is one where construction and, and development and planning, we overpromise, we overpromise and we underdeliver.
The definition of construction is problems. If you don't expect it, you're in the wrong business.
Exactly.
So I understand that.
That's why we want to move it out to August, so we don't have any problem. No, August or September?
September. Because August is full.
August is full, okay, September.
And, and you know, just for the record, it has nothing to do with Larry being late in his peer review, period. Larry's...
How is that, how is that possible?
Because Larry is doing 10 peer reviews for the town of Georgetown right now. All of these plans that were promised by multiple developers over the last year ended up showing up on my desk two months ago. And this is, this, he, he told me today about this particular site plan and all the work he did wasn't as thorough as he would normally do for the work of the board, so...
He's going to be making a second pass at it anyway.
Oh, yeah. No, he expedited this as fast as he could relative to the entire workload he's dealing with.
Kudos to him.
And, and he has been really good to this board relative to the amount of projects we've been dealing with.
I'm not trying to show any disrespect to Larry. I'm sure that he's going to...
I would hope not, because Larry has incredible standing...
John, I'm not trying, it's not to my advantage to show any disrespect to Larry. I'm just giving the board a chance.
Okay, guys. Done? How about this? How's this sound? You're going to have everything we need, the updated revised plans, you're going to have your response to Larry Graham, all shown on the plan, and it's all going to be for the September meeting, and we'll rock and roll that night. How's that sound?
Doesn't sound good, Mr. Chair.
Well, it's the best we can, this board can do. Would you like to withdraw and refile later?
Mr. Chair, you know, you've said that in two different meetings three times.
That's your only option.
No, it's not my only option, and I take disrespect.
You have another option?
You're showing me disrespect by even saying that publicly.
No, no, I want you to know that that...
No, I want you to know that I think, and other people think, that you want us to withdraw.
Oh, I want you to be able to do whatever you wish to do.
You've made it known to other people and publicly that you want us to withdraw, that you don't want this project.
I don't believe I have ever stated that, sir.
Okay.
You may have presumed that.
No, I didn't presume it.
And when did I state that? Okay.
By continuing to ask publicly as a chair and as a member for, do you want to withdraw?
It's my obligation to ask.
No, it's not your obligation to ask. If I want to withdraw, I would ask to have it withdrawn, and that words have never come out of my mouth.
Okay.
The most that has come out of my mouth is that if this continues to get pushed out like you're doing, this project may change 100%.
You know what?
I understand, and that's your right to do.
Mr. Chairman.
And then there'll be more upset neighbors with less say, and that's sad.
I completely understand.
Then why don't you help fix that?
I am helping it, whether you recognize it or not.
I don't. Just pushing it off to September with how many months that we've been in front of this board is not correct.
Sir, let's stop it. Let, let's just, let's just end this, folks, okay? Can I hear a motion to continue the hearing? Please.
That would be for the second Wednesday in September. Hold on one second. The 11th.
9/11. 11th?
9/11. Well, is there a motion?
That doesn't sound right.
That's the second...
Second Wednesday in September is the 11th.
Is very full.
September? That's the second week in September, the 11th?
Can I see it too? Look.
Oh, I see. The first is on Sunday.
Motion was made? Who made that motion? I'm sorry. Joanne, you made the motion?
I did.
And who seconded it?
I did.
Did I hear a second?
I'll do it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Hearings continued until September 11th, 2019. Hope you get everything in its time. I hope you do.
John, is there something that Nancy can do and get into it?
That has to be executed tonight.
Why does this have to be executed?
Because it has to be.
Oh, okay. No, we have to, we have to temporarily reopen to vote that. I'm sorry.
You know, we could put it on for the, we can put it on for the July 10th meeting and take final action on it. Because that, the final action date for this board to act on this application is July 15th.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we could get it done then.
Oh, okay.
Do we have to be present to do that?
You can be here or not.
Not if you send that in.
We're going to put it on for the agenda. You better be ready to take final action.
So Nancy would have to fill this out properly?
Right.
And it would have to be here for the July 10th?
Did John circle the dates, the correct dates and everything, so she doesn't...
Does it have to be a week ahead of time or just by the 10th?
That's just the fact.
No, you know what?
Come in the day.
Maybe the best course of action is to put it on for the July 10th and take final action that evening. If they're not going to give us an extension, we don't have the information necessary to make an informed decision on the project. So the board would be best to take the necessary action.
That would not help John at all. John, do you realize what he's saying?
I know what he's trying to do.
All right, hold on a minute. Let me talk, please.
Yep.
You, you, I don't think you want us to hold you to the line, because we will vote. And if we don't have the material, you know what the vote's going to be. You don't want that. We don't want that. So let's cool down, sign the darn paper, and good night.
Okay.
Okay, John?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, if you're willing to sign it.
Here's the reason.
I heard you, I heard you.
Normally, I, I'm willing to sign anything.
Yeah, it's just an extension.
But, but my problem is, what my attorney told me about tonight is nothing that has happened tonight. She would normally never send me into something like this. It's not Nancy's style.
I, I believe you, John, that she's very good, and she wouldn't...
That's why I'm just a little hesitant? I'm sure this is nothing.
I mean, you can read it yourself. You, you see what you're reading.
It's not a big deal.
What you don't understand is, you're on your time, the board's on their time. We have a review process that has to be adhered to. We have public to listen to. We have a whole public hearing process. It isn't about approving a project the way you want it approved, when you want it approved. It's about, the public...
John, I'm behind that.
Everybody, please.
Our schedule is really...
No, no, I was going to say, we're scheduled for September. I'm just talking about this now, that's all.
The hearing, the hearing has been continued. Thank you very much. Have a great night, sir.
That's for the extended.
Thank you very much. If you get that in on the 26th or whatever, July, we won't take action. And if you don't get it in, we will have, we'll be forced to.
John, what does this need to be in? We've got some three different dates.
Right now.
Right now, if you want it.
Okay, so I'm going to go in the back of the room with permission of the chair. I'm going to just read it so I'm not in front of people?
Sure.
Take your time. You've got all night to, you have all night to submit that, all night. And we've continued, we've continued the hearing anyway.
Ask Nancy, call her out.
Really don't. I know, it's time.
We like the project, it's just that it has to go through this review process.
You could take a picture of it and show Nancy, right?
Moving ahead. Thank you. Moving ahead, next, next project. What's the next one on the, on the agenda? Would be 6870 Kenny Street. Thank you.
Tony Capitetti, Hayes and Darnes, 603 C. L. Street. Any chance we could...
What's that? No, it's not working yet.
Oh, come on.
No, it's frozen. It's not cooperating.
We're not wasting time on John.
No, I thought it was off.
That's right. I looked through it about five times.
It's not doing anything. It's stuck on that channel.
Can you hit F5?
Let's see.
Your screen is not that?
Nope. My screen is not that.
50 minutes.
That's what happened before.
Were you really? Getting hot. Why didn't you take the train?
You got the air conditioning on, John?
You can take that back. I have that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Why do you have to put it on an easel like...
It's not easy to mend, is it?
Yeah, I did too.
The last time we were here, April 24th, we went through the plan. There was some comments about the design from the board. We took those to Hock, did a, essentially a complete redesign, and submitted some revised plans the board had asked. And I guess we have some new members that weren't here, so I, I apologize if I'm being redundant. I'll go through the project real briefly. They're looking to construct a 6,000-square-foot manufacturing processing facility for cannabis beverages. It is located within the correct overlay zone, more than 300 feet away from any residential properties. The original project came through with two buildings that were interconnected. We didn't have a use for the second building. The board asked that we remove that use, which we did. What we did provide is a level pad that we will grade out, that should this future use come in later for the board, the construction, the site grading will accommodate that. And I believe one of the plans did show a future footprint for the 5,500-square-foot footprint. There were some questions about the...
What's the revision on this plan? The rev date on this plan?
On this plan, the landscape plan, we submitted that.
The 61219. All right. Oh, that's the planning board comments, 61219.
Oh, I see, yes.
This landscape plan came in, I want to say last...
Okay.
And that's the final thing we're waiting for, but the, the actual plan itself was submitted on June 12th. And it included everything except this area. Once the redesign was done...
I didn't notice it. I didn't see this, I didn't see the trees.
So we, that was one of the comments from the board, was provide some, some buffer to the highway. We're no longer going into that slope at the highway, but haven't gone out there. It's mainly deciduous trees out at the highway. So we talked to the landscape architect, and we, at the board's kind of, our discussion with the board the last time, we added some pine trees, some evergreen trees along that. So during the winter, there was concerns, before there was going to be a wall, there was concerns that that would kind of be your first view of the town of Georgetown coming off the highway. Now you'll still have the full tree line as you do now, but we've added some pines to kind of break it up. So during the winter, you still won't be looking in on an industrial property, and the building is now much further away from the highway. So we think we did try and follow the board's direction and come up with, with the plan that, that meets a lot of the recommendations. We're providing 17 spaces for the single building now instead of the 18 for the two buildings. That was one of the concerns. However, right now, they're only looking at about four employees out there. We've, you know, like I said, reoriented the building.
Excuse me, you said four or 40?
Four employees.
Four.
Yeah, so it's, it's a pretty automated process. Two, two of the employees are here with us tonight. I think all four were here at the first meeting. So we're, we're trying to work through the board's recommendations and really provide a comprehensive plan that addresses these. So we're, we're providing a number of parking spaces. In the future building, there is some area for additional parking that we don't show on this plan, But we do have the ability to, to basically double the spaces. It's through, it'll be a cross parking easement with the adjacent property. They're both under common ownership. Those questions we had, through Larry Graham's original review, we had a single catch basin before. We've now added multiple catch basins. Of course, we, we split the drive so that future building would access from the northerly side of the building and all the, the, the tank marijuana use would come from the southerly side of the building. So that was one of the concerns of, of the board at the last hearing was trying to separate those two uses. Not that we're showing two uses anymore, but we're, we're trying to, to incorporate that for the future development as well. We did respond to a lot of Larry's comments, although a lot of them were kind of moot because we had a excessively deep detention pond based off of the last site development that is now a pretty broad pond with some three to one slopes, which are multiple slopes versus the, the two to one on the last one. Comprehensive drainage plan. We did provide some site distance triangles. And it is a, a fairly dense, densely vegetated area, so we're proposing to, to remove some vegetation in that line of site. Larry did send a review out this morning. And, or actually last night, I received it this morning, I apologize. That was one of his comments, was a perpetual condition of maintaining that, which is something we expect.
Either that or an easement.
Do you want to provide an easement? Oh, actually, that's, that's in the right of.
Is that in the right of way?
Yes, the right of way is, is huge out there.
It's in the right of what? It is.
So we are proposing to kind of pull those back, provide some signage to warn of the driveway, similar to what's out there currently. But the, the bulk of the plan, like I said, was reorienting the building, providing those two separate parking areas and accesses and maintaining a path for the, the future development. I don't know if the board had a chance to, to see Larry's latest review.
Well, what was it, seventy pages?
No, actually, for, for Larry, it's.
When did it come out?
Four pages. It came out.
It was emailed to us last night.
Oh.
Yeah. Now, I have, if I could just preface what's going on. It was not, it was not ready in time to be included in the package.
I know what's happening, John. I, I completely understand what's happening. This board is so anxious to grant continuances in a close, close, very, very soon fashion. And I get it. You're, you're all wonderful people for doing that. You're trying really hard. But the timelines are just not realistic. And that hap, that's, that's what's happening here. Reality is coming against your good nature.
Now, you know, just, just if I could, Mr. Chairman, so I did go over this with Larry and he was quite pleased. And his, his report is, you know, all positive in that the project has been reduced basically in half of what was originally proposed. He has, and this is what he does state in his report, that he has minor issues remaining. But at the end of his report, and I talked to him directly about this, if the presentation, everything goes along smoothly this evening, he would have no problem with the board conditionally approving for consideration in that he would do his final review and make sure all of the, the fine tuning of the engineering aspects of this project are reviewed favorably by him prior to final action being taken by the board.
Good input, good input.
I, I will say that I, I wasn't pleased at the extended continuance the last time. However, it did seem to work out in our favor, so.
You have to, you have to, yeah. You're doing your due diligence. You're representing your clients and naturally the same, the gentleman that we were just dealing with, he, he's doing the same. Everybody tries to get a suit.
Everybody wants to get it done tomorrow.
Everybody wants it tomorrow, but.
Yesterday.
You know, it, it takes a lot longer than people think. A lot of moving parts.
As far as the Larry Graham review, the first page and a half is just the summary of what's there. The last page is, is closing, so we have essentially a page and a half of comments, which for Larry, I think is a, a pretty good job for.
It's tourist. Absolutely positively tourist for Larry. He must like it.
And we got the.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's.
Harry, you submitted the soil thing.
Yeah, we, we did soil tests out there. That was one of his, his comments. Again, we, we have a, a note in the drainage report saying that they need to excavate down to, to natural material because it is filled material. He just asked us to clarify that on the plan and provide a detail showing that. So.
Are you aware about, excuse me, are you aware about the tight tank requirement now?
Yes, for the, and we have a.
Marijuana businesses.
I, I am aware of that and we are showing, showing an industrial holding tank on the, the plans currently. So we did revise that as well to make sure we.
Mr. Chairman, so his last comment on page three is miscellaneous. We have no issue with checking off miscellaneous items on the next or final iteration of the plans and documents as requested.
Open that up a minute.
With, Harry, with your concern about landscaping, which is important.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. This is the, forgive me, this is the first time I'm actually seeing this plan. I don't know what happened. I must have picked up the wrong.
I never saw it before either.
No, no, this, this is fresh.
Oh, this is fresh. Oh, this is the landscaping, which is very important in my respect.
Larry mentioned something about two different soils that you were, he didn't agree with your determination?
He said, okay, so there's, there are two soil groups out here.
Yeah.
We sent him, just to, to make it easier to transmit, reduce sized copies of the watershed map. He says that there's no soil delineation line that shows where the A soils are and the B soils are. The line was on there. It's, it's kind of light, so we're gonna, as part of this, we're gonna send him a full size.
No, he said it was two different ones.
Is that gonna, is that gonna change your?
You had one, you had one category of soil and he had another. If I, if I recall correctly, and what, when you're coming to plantings, the soil that is there is not great for planting.
It's not so much for plantings as, as much as for the, the stormwater calculations. Different types of soils absorb at different rates.
That's, that's the other thing.
The line is on the plan. There was no.
The line is shown on the plan?
Yes.
And it's reflective in the, in the stormwater calculations presented? In the analysis?
And, you know, his comment now is that the maps don't identify the soil boundary lines or show flow, flow paths. The flow paths are so small that they're all the minimum, which is six minutes, which is.
Which soil is it going to be where your plantings are gonna occur?
The plantings are in both. The, the, the A B soil line runs basically diagonally across the site with the A soil being where the building is and the B soil being where.
Where the wetland used to be? Oh, I mean where the, where the, where the void was?
My point is, is that the soils are not conducive to plantings and actually having anything to grow there in that kind of soil. So you're gonna, I would suggest that you do get some decent soil and then plant the trees.
For the landscaping plans, there are notes about augmenting the soil, providing mulch around the root balls and, and that sort of thing.
Because we can put it, we can put a review of a year or two years after the plantings that you would have to replace whatever doesn't.
Oh, yeah, that's, that, that's something that we would expect. Anything usually, any landscape plans usually condition that, you know, after.
Because that soil was just fill in.
Yeah, and that's.
And.
Like in the detention pond, that was one of Larry's comments, is to show the extent that we need to remove the soil. So it's, it's very clear, rather than just in the report. The, he, he had questions about the three to one side slope, just showing a detail. Again, because it's unclear as to what the composition of the fill material is.
Till you excavate it, you're not, you're never gonna know what you find down there. In that area, you're, yeah.
So we're open to a condition that, that we do a bottom of, bottom of pond inspection, bottom of bed inspection. However, you want to term it that when we do it, you know, this supervision and.
Absolutely.
If we need to take more soil out, then we have to take more soil out.
If you need to pull some out and maybe replace it.
Yeah, but, and the detail, we're willing to add to, to spread the load around because we don't know what the, the fill material is. Go down eighteen inches extra, put some Merafi filter fabric to spread the load and then come back up with about twelve inches of well drained material and six inches of lawn and seed on top of it, just so in the detention pond.
Did, did you guys do test bits there?
We did.
You did?
Yeah, and there was about fifteen feet of fill.
Yeah, I, I know that. I know that. I live here. I drive by it. No, I was just wondering, we, we water.
No bodies in there?
No, so there was no water, which makes sense because when you look at the, the wetland line, the wetland boundary, that's down.
No cement shoes.
It was down.
Yeah, it's down a good sixteen, eighteen feet. So we held the bottom of the pit. We went down about fifteen feet with no water. So we held the bottom of the pit as the, the water table and worked our way back up.
Then the other interesting comment he had, which I hadn't seen before from Larry, was the, the state highway.
Oh, DOT?
That you're gonna need permission for the drainage to occur on that property, on the state highway.
The previous iteration, we were discharging from our pond and our visual inspection of the soil showed that it, we thought it came back. When we ran the, the department, it actually runs this way. So when we, when we changed the drainage, we're now discharging to the existing soil on Tenny Street. And that goes out to the wetlands. However, we will still need to file with DOT just to, to kind of notify them of the project. Because it does go to the drainage system, but the drainage report showed, and their standard is that you can't increase the rate. And our report shows that there's a, a significant decrease in rates from existing.
Are you gonna get moving on that? Because I'm sure that's gonna take a while.
It's usually just a, a matter of verifying them and they look at the, the numbers and they say, okay, if you're not, if you're not making any hard connection and there's no.
Can we have that before we close this up?
We were hoping for a condition of.
I, I think there are gonna be a number of things of this, in, in this permit.
Prior to construction or?
That are gonna be prior to construction, but after we close.
Yeah, and that's.
For, for instance, if I'm not mistaken, if I, I don't know, has, has that changed? You said in your original submission that you hadn't yet applied to the Cannabis Control Commission?
No, that has not changed.
That has not changed?
No.
Now, are you unable to actually make application with them?
No, we could.
Before you have this?
No, we could. We can, we can do it with an address, so the vacant lot. Really, it comes down to a matter of process. There's a certain amount of process. If we have the existing building and everything's ready to go, it's a, a certain, you know, line of effort that you move through with the Cannabis Control Commission. If we're in a pre-construction phase, we would basically go through this type of review with the state as well. It would actually slow us down even more, so we've taken the route of investing in the community and the building and then going to the state with the complete package. We've talked directly with the executive director of the Cannabis Control Commission. He agrees with the approach. He thinks it's smart. It avoids the architectural review, which has no defined timeline, so that could delay the project another six to twelve months on top of any other delays that we might have from an unforeseen nature.
Well, my only concern is, and you know, I don't want it to leave, but my concern here is that how will you get a building permit until you have your authorization? Your license? Is it a license from the Cannabis Control Commission?
Why do we need our license for a building? I'm not sure I follow.
Because this is, the only reason this building exists is because of the use. And that use is a special permit. And this is all new to me, but this is how I'm thinking it's gonna work. You can't begin building this building, in my opinion, or get a building permit to start it until you have a license to.
Based on our last, when we were here last and we detailed our, our approach, the idea was that once the building's complete, we can't operate. And so, I mean, we can get our occupancy per, permit, but we can't operate as a business until we get that state permit. So the building would then be sitting there with equipment and things in it, but not operational.
Have you talked to a building inspector?
Well, interestingly enough, if, if I may.
Oh, sure, of course.
My, my, my line of reasoning is this. What, and I don't want to jinx you at all, but what would happen if the building was built, an occupancy permit was issued? And then, at that point, you found out that you did not get your license?
We're also looking for a hemp processing license as well to, to make related due for fee processing, toll manufacturing within the facility. So if we didn't get a cannabis license, you know, we would still be operational as a hemp facility. But given the merit-based nature.
But that's not what this use was.
No, it's, it's not. We would have to come back. I mean, there, there's no.
At that point, you wouldn't be coming back to us.
True.
You would be in, in.
The building permit.
You would be in ZBA hell.
Correct.
Because you'd have a, a building where you could not. Yeah. This, this is very unique.
It is, and it's an opportunity for us to get a building in Georgetown and we're, you know, investing a lot. We've already invested a lot of money in this project.
I get it, I get it.
To move that along so that we're not then delayed at a state level going through an unnecessary architectural review.
So you're taking a chance?
Yes, absolutely.
They would be building at risk. I don't believe you would need your occupancy permit per se to.
Not to apply, no.
To apply. So, I mean, you could withhold occupancy until they got their permit. The, the weird thing about the Cannabis Control Commission is you don't actually get your actual permit until they do a final inspection of your physical building.
Oh, so you have to have the building.
So your final operating permit and your final sign off comes after they inspect the physical building. You do get a.
Provisional.
Provisional, yes. I was gonna say partial, but yes, provisional permit.
You get a provisional permit? That we could, that we could trigger an occupancy with?
Correct. We can speak to the provisional. This goes to Eric's comment regarding the portion of construction.
Please state your name.
Matt, Matt Landor, employee of Cold Mountain. The provisional, the reason that we are following this path, we've spoken with the state across the entire process, is that when we have one wall constructed, this changes definition from a pre-construction phase to an existing building. At that juncture, we can submit our merit-based application, which we've worked directly with the state for a couple of years on, at which point we then go into the clock on the provisional license. They have up to sixty days to respond. We have all of those boxes checked. A final operating license will be down court. Once the building is completed, all of our manufacturing equipment's in there, all of our environments are set. At that point, we have an occupancy permit from the town and then the state comes in and they do a final tour to make sure that we are to code at what the Cannabis Control Commission requires for us to operate under their jurisdiction as well as the local jurisdiction.
And you've already done the agreement with the selectmen?
Correct.
Yes.
They wouldn't have been here without that.
That triggered us.
Yeah, that couldn't even be here before us.
And to add on, we have, we have had multiple conversations with Chief Mitchell. We have a letter on hand, I believe John has it, regarding our safety protocols and adherence to all state and fire code.
Yeah.
Eric and I met with Chief Kummer this morning. He said we could quote him that our, our security plan is, is in line with anything he would be liking to see. He just asked that when we finally have a, a shell of the building, that we work with him just on camera location. His only question actually goes back to ninety-five and something to do with an old drive-in movie theater and some issues with ninety-five access. And he asked that we, we augment our security cameras towards ninety-five for just that reason.
Maybe add some motion sensors to, in case anybody's approaching from that side.
That's good.
I'd recommend you add another couple of lines of trees too. It's a, I, I see it as an effort, but it's feeble, in my, in my opinion.
We were removing vegetation to within about fifteen feet of the highway and now we're, we're not touching any of the trees that are out there.
Right, but there's gonna be a lot of low, low level land there and just flat land that you can plant trees and intersperse that view and break that view up.
So that's, that's the future building pad?
I know, but you don't have a permit for it. And when you do, then you might be able to tear it down. You can dig them up.
So the thing about the trees too, is your site from, from coming on, riding on Tenny Street. If you make those trees too high.
This site?
You're not gonna have any.
That's this side.
That's this side.
This is the, this is the highway side.
Yeah.
And it's tough with the overhead.
But they're gonna put trees over here as well.
There were, a couple of trees proposed on this side?
Yeah, so we, coming in, you know, along the edge of the driveway, we're proposing some trees, kind of similar to, to like a street tree layout. And then some, some low lying landscaping on the side of the walkway to kind of screen the walkway a little bit. Nothing too major coming in to the site, just because we, we do want to maintain, you know, clear site distances for, for cameras.
There's no sidewalk there, is there? I don't remember.
Not on the street, but there's a concrete walkway that runs around the building now because we are parking on both sides of the building. So we want to be able to interconnect the.
But in front of the building on, on Tenny Street, there isn't any sidewalks there.
Oh, on Tenny Street, no. We're actually removing vegetation for site distance. But once the vegetation's removed, there still remains about a forty foot heavily planted area. And then we drop down significantly.
So, so when your planting area would be low bushes or?
It's, it's all right here.
Yeah, you don't want high trees.
Yeah, no, that's not, not in the, the front area. The, what we were looking at is some, some pines on the back to provide some screening to the highway. And it looks like the, the chair's recommending some additional plantings, which I, I think would be amenable to, to adding if that.
The, the, the best thing that I could hope for would be that you really would not see as much of that building as you possibly could. Obscure it. Make that line of trees just continue on. So that when you drive by, all you see is trees. And it's tough, but by, by interspacing them with a couple of rows of trees, you can do it. And.
It's two stories now, so it's gonna be tough. You're gonna see the top of the roof.
You can't see the property now when you drive by.
But it's not two stories, is it?
Right, you can't see the property, but when you.
The current building that's on the property is two stories and you can't see that either.
We're set back further than the current building.
Yeah, that's set back.
No, we're, we're closer to Tenny Street than the current building.
Could you give us a picture of what it's gonna look like?
We did. We also, yeah, resubmitted a, a bunch of information with the special permit. You asked for detailed floor plans, operational flows, security protocols. So you have all that stuff and a three D rendering of the building.
From this side. Don't go. Not, not asking for a rendering from, from the highway.
And you're going to clean up that mess that I see from my map?
We did put a note on the plan saying to, to clean the, the area. Mr. Graham recommended that that's also a condition, which we have no problem with. We assume that that'd be the case.
That's the most.
You're gonna want to clean up your property anyway. It's, it's, it's on your, it's on your property. You'll clean it up. We don't need that as a condition, but we can always add one.
You're gonna clean it up, right?
Of course you will. Of course you will.
And these, in, in this use, that the marijuana use is, they're, they're subject to periodic random inspections there. So maintaining a clean site goes a long way. I, I try and tell contractors that too, that it's subject to erosion control inspections.
Absolutely.
Your entrance should, should be sparkling, so when they drive by, they don't have a reason to pull in.
Absolutely. I hear you.
Bruce, anything?
Not really.
Thoughts?
You have a host agreement already with the selectmen, so.
And you realize the permit is only for five years when you do get it here. You're gonna have to come back to us. Not me, but them. Five years.
For the town or?
Annual license.
They have to come back. The permit is only for five years that we grant.
As is the.
As well as the state, right?
The host agreement is five years as well, so we have to come back to that as well.
Yeah.
And you were, you've been here before, I know.
Yes, we have.
With Halsey Farms, so I know you know that.
Well, Larry was very thorough. He did an excellent job. I did glance at that and if you follow everything he said, no problems. That I can see. I don't know about the rest of them.
You know, I, I, I think Larry did a, a good job. There's, there's some language in there that he appreciated, the redesign based off the input from the board.
He did a lot of work.
I think we've, I think we've, we've come to.
Except for. So we earned this money.
I think we've come to a point where we've addressed a lot of the concerns the board had. I'm, I'm hoping that the board sees that the, the remaining outstanding items are, are minor. They've been discussed in something that could be conditioned as they work towards a decision and, and submit revised plans.
Would it be possible to verbally increase the buffering along here to add a second row of, the second, possibly a third row of trees?
Yes, I think we can agree to, if we. Yes. If we.
Don't you come up here.
Are you a landscape architect? I'm very sorry. Could I hear your name, please?
My name is David Valetta. I'm with K N P D Capital. We structured the deal on behalf of the owners. And we're pleased to have the startup as a tenant and. of the owners, and we're pleased to have the startup as a tenant, and we're always to be able to develop the site. Mr. Cheever has owned both properties since 2007, and if the board remembers, I don't want to go back and slay old dragons, but when we, before we purchased that site, there was a 35-foot pile of wood there, about 200 feet long. As part of that purchase, we had to clean up that site. Mr. Cheever's done an extraordinary job of maintaining it through the 2008 crash and keeping everything. And instead, I know there's some material out there. We were unaware of that. That was from an old tenant that we had been leasing to. That's in the process of getting cleaned up.
Our company, right?
Pardon?
Wasn't that Neptune?
I think it was the cement company.
That cement company?
Yeah, Georgetown Concrete.
Really?
That's part of-
That's because Neptune took all the weight.
Oh, Neptune?
All the love.
Neptune was the previous owner, yes.
Okay, I figured Neptune, okay.
And so, Mr. Cheever wanted to try to develop that site as a long-term asset, and we believe in this company. We're expecting that they're gonna be able to achieve everything that they intend. However, the lease contemplates an event that if they weren't able to get their permits and what have you, we want the building. We will release it, but we're expecting to be able to work with this tenant, and they're very promising. Good team of people, and they've raised plenty of capital to be able to do the things that they're hoping to do.
Very good.
Thank you.
I do have one-
And we'll put the additional robo-trees.
Into what?
There was one other comment from Larry that-
Yeah, I haven't read it, so.
I think, Lawrence, and most of them are pretty minor. He had some questions about the location of the dumpster pad that we're showing. As being, he sees it as a less-than-ideal location. I just wanted to kind of provide some of the thought process as to how we arrived at that location from the board. We know it is kind of up on the front side of the building. However, that's kind of the employee access side. We are proposing a fence around the dumpster pad to keep it screened. If a standard trash truck was to come down, refuse truck, it's pretty tight maneuvering without expanding the pavement more than is really necessary. So the thought process was if you pull into the main drive, back into the-
Drive in, back up.
Head forward, nose in, pick it up, put it back down, back up, close the gates, and then turn around. And we did set the turning radiuses, so a 35-foot trash truck can accommodate that. That's why we ended up with the dumpster pad.
As long as there's no cars there. As long as no one parked there.
Is that what the loading lines are?
Well, that's the loading area, so that'll only be used where it says concrete apron.
Concrete walk, concrete apron?
Yep. So that little driveway area, there's a garage door there, and that's where they load their products. So they would have full control over any vehicle that would be in front of that.
And that's the only loading area?
That's the only loading area in this facility. You're not talking a lot of major shipments there. What's coming in is gonna be significantly smaller than the finished beverages.
It's all Sprinter vans.
Yeah, I saw that in the application. How wide is that driveway? Is that access way, whatever you want?
24 feet.
24 feet?
Yes. I believe that's required by design.
The driveway you're trying to-
Yep, that's what I'm talking about. Do you have any comments? Thoughts, feelings?
No. I mean, are we voting today on these provisions being met, or like, where are we at with this?
Good question. Bob, how do you feel?
There was a major change. And I believe, now, let's see, we've got other plans. I certainly want to see. I think we should continue.
I think we have to, anyway.
Yeah.
It's only good, but I'm just trying to get a little bit of a feel.
Oh, I have a positive feeling, certainly. I don't see any-
Any major stumbling blocks?
Nothing at all.
Anything that concerned you at all that you want to bring the attention of the board to the applicant?
No, not really.
Nothing jumping out at you?
I mean, the access to the other property is a gray area. I don't know how definitive this interconnection needs to be.
Well, it's sort of like the old seagoing maps where that's the world that falls off.
There'd be dragons here.
Yeah, there, yes. You aren't here, be dragons, yes. But I'm sure for these folks-
It's there if you need it.
They are dragons. There are many dragons.
It's tying into what's existing.
Exactly.
And we're trying to channelize it as much as possible. There was a comment about a 23,000-square-foot discrepancy where there's more area in the proposed drainage, because when this gets developed-
I haven't read Larry's comments. I will.
We're taking into account about a half-acre extra land, because when this gets developed, we anticipate that'll end up having to drain to this area. So Larry did pick up that there was extra area in the proposed, which, again, if we took that area out, the drainage system's just gonna work better and continue to mitigate.
Are you talking about future expansion, or are you talking about-
So future expansion.
Expansion on the other lot?
Well, the way, I tried to look at, if this building goes in, how are we gonna park this? How are we gonna grade this?
Okay.
So I tried to make accommodations, so when we, if we come back, we can say to the board that, hey, we don't have to go disturb all this again. We've kind of made accommodations when we originally designed it, and the change will just be additional recharge, which will be handed on the site.
But it still will be three lots there, right?
Two lots.
Two lots, because there's only one lot now.
There's two lots currently owned by Marston Tenny. They own 68 and 70. We're only proposing-
This one.
This one, yeah.
With the one building.
The first, the first one.
It's two lots, but just one building, yeah.
That's one. This is one. There's building over there, and this one being proposed.
It's that interconnection that I was wondering about, but it's an existing interconnection. So basically, they're accommodating in this design access to-
They're approving all of this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the second floor will just be from marijuana business, or are you-
It's one floor. The ceiling is just 26 feet.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's one floor. We did provide detailed floor plans with rooms labeled and showing sort of future state of equipment. We don't have all of that yet, but all that's in there.
You mentioned another business, if they build another wall?
I was simply saying that in the best-case scenario, if the landlord wants to build a second building, I hope we're in a position to want to expand and be a part of that project as well.
Well, I hope it happens for you.
I just want to get through this.
And they are of clear understanding that they have to come back with amended site plan. Philly, how do you feel?
I want to extend it. I think we've, listen, if you get to read Larry, and I know you will, that report, Larry cleaned it up a lot, and-
Is there anything outstanding from what Larry dealt with?
No.
The only thing we didn't discuss was moving the handicap parking spot, which didn't see any issue.
That's a simple, so, again, trying to think forward, put the handicap spot at the westerly side of the parking lot, knowing that a second building is contemplated, so it wouldn't trigger a second handicap spot. It would be shared. Larry recommends that it gets moved down closer to the door. There's no problem doing that. It's just changing the striping. I checked the grading today. The grading still works as far as it being an accessible route with the curb cut ramp, so we have no problem with that. The, you know, I can briefly touch on everything just to make sure.
Where's the-
I don't see any need.
I don't see the door.
Is that the door, or is that the-
So where the spot elevation says 111, there's a door there, and then there's a door around the corner as well.
It was the same elevation.
Yeah, so the floor is 111 all the way across. Yeah, so the handicap location was his third comment. We touched on the-
It's 111?
The site triangles, dumpster pad location, we touched on. He did make a comment, remove the, he asked for underground electric to be shown, which we had shown going out to the pole on the other side of Tenny Street. He said typically Georgetown Electric wants to go overhead, across the street, and then down. We're happy to defer Georgetown Electric. We just wanted to show our intent was that we would be underground on our site.
Understood.
We did have an engineering team meet with Georgetown Power and Electric to make sure that the plans and access were all snuffed, so I believe they're-
The manager came, Dave Schofield?
Yes, it was our, yeah, that's who I believe they met with. They scheduled time and walked the site together.
Simply acquiesce to anything they want.
John, what do you think?
I'm good at that.
You're gonna lose anyway. You'll lose anyway.
Very, very good.
Are we ready to continue, or you have another comment?
I mean, Mike-
I'm sorry. Forgive me, John. I didn't ask you if you had any questions.
You know, I mean, we are dealing with a project now that's, you know, better suited for the site size-wise, and I wish Larry did get his report in, in a time, more time than that, but, you know, that's the way it is. He did conclude, and I talked directly with him at length today about this particular project. He has no problem with the board conditionally approving at this stage, and that he will review. It would be conditional on his final review that the plans comply with his initial peer review and second period.
Well, let me ask this of the board. Is there anyone that would have any acid dripping in their stomach if we tasked John with creating a draft decision?
I find conditional, though.
Well, it's a draft decision. It's a draft decision.
Yeah.
We're not making any, we're not voting on anything tonight. We're just, John comes up with it. He'll have it for us a week prior to whatever meeting we continue this to. We'll get a chance to look at all the details by that time. Any changes to the plan that might be made as far as our, if this is the plan you're gonna stick with, just so that we have one that we're gonna stay with? John's pretty good at coming up with the appropriate wordsmithing to describe the additional buffering on the 95 side, and is everybody good with that?
I am.
Seems like by unanimous consent. John, you're being tasked with creating a very first marijuana business special permit decision.
And luckily, we do have an example that we can draw upon, and, you know, this, and I just did a decision recently that we'll be signing tonight, so. Yeah. Unfortunately, we're dealing with the tight timeframe again. July 10th is not gonna work.
Yeah.
It's not gonna, no. For the August 14th meeting, we're actually dealing with a draft decision that we would have to put fine.
We'd be, we'd most likely be crossing the drawing lines through-
And like this Cambridge Port project, there were a couple of minor things that were adjusted and, you know, ready to go now.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll work on, and, you know, that's really the best thing we can do at this point in time. We are in the summer season, and, you know, we have a meeting scheduled already, and everything's being continued date-specific. So I would suggest the August 14th meeting that we continue with, and we do need a Form H act.
Yeah, a Form H extension?
Yeah, and again, as we, as you-
Okay, so we'll start with that.
Earlier tonight, we do it on quarterly basis, so eventually, yeah, so it's September 30th. Already executed, which just needs to vote on tonight. We'll hopefully continue airing until the 14th of August, and then we'll be done.
For the moment.
For the moment. Not for tonight. We still have business.
I know, I know, I know.
Oh, sorry. I was like, how is that only an hour and 20 minutes ago?
Sounds like a horse.
It just kills you, you know, because it's been working pretty well. We didn't come up and test-drive it and-
It's a valuable tool when it's worth it.
It's the best, yeah.
I'll accept the motion to accept the Form H extension of time from the applicant. They're going out to September 30th?
I second.
I thought you made the motion, right?
No, I make a motion to accept the continuation-
The Form H.
A Form H. Accept the Form H for September 30th, 2019 deadline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it, and we're already signed up. You've already previously signed it, so we're good here. That's still in the package there. Great, beautiful.
And now we need to-
And now we need to make a motion.
To continue?
To continue. Are you making that?
I am making that motion to continue until August-
14th.
14th.
August 14th.
I second.
7:15, or later.
Motion has been made to continue to August 14th. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Hearings continued. To, motion carries? August 14th.
And that's to review the approval decision.
Or to full continuation of the hearing. It goes without saying, it's continuing. We'll get about 80% done with the changes that Larry asked for today, that's how.
You have a little bit more that you have to do for that? You have more revs?
Just moving the handicap spot.
Moving some revs?
Yeah, so it's just-
Then you can show that, you can actually show that of the line of trees?
Yes, so we can add that to the plan.
And mix them up a little, too. It doesn't have to all be fine, you know?
That was the thought. They gave a list of acceptable trees?
I didn't have a chance to read it.
Yeah, so that's kind of the thought, is that they should be interspersed, but we've given a list, so they can kind of mix them up, so it's not just a row.
Right.
You know, arbitrary or something.
Make it pretty.
Natural.
Yeah, make it natural, make it pretty.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night. Did you, oh, you already signed it?
Oh, yeah, it's already signed. Lost my handy-dandy sheet that I had. I was filling things out. I was.
That circle that, that's what you want, right?
Yeah, yeah. Where are we? Okay, back to the agenda, guys. Hang on a second.
They're gone, the party's done.
Yeah, the party's just beginning, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Are we doing the Cambridge Port air system?
No, I don't think, we closed that, didn't we?
Have them sign.
We did.
Last meeting, I think. Yeah, so we're just, at this point, we're just signing.
Why was this in our stuff, then?
Mr. Chairman?
Because that's a, that is a final, this is the most important thing you will do, will be to put your signature on the decision.
On the Mylar.
And on the Mylar.
On the Mylar, okay, yeah.
Right? That's the only important thing we do.
All the rest of it is-
All the rest of it is fluff. Just fluff. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mister-
I do have an executed Form H for 51 West Main Street through September 30th.
Is there a motion on the floor? Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the Form H to-
I made the motion to accept the Form H for 51 Main Street until September 30th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to extend the Form H extension to, of time for decision to September 30th, 2019. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Motion carries? Let the record show the motion carries. Get our scribe.
What?
Bring on the scribe.
It just demonstrates how responsible a person I am.
Important, important, important stuff. Homalane subdivision? It seems like we have a comment report here.
Yes, yep. And this is associated with the first item on the planning board, the planning office agenda item. So, did everybody get that handout before you?
This is the comments report?
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually titled "Handout at the Top," right-hand corner.
Handout, 626, 19.
Homalane? Yep. So if I could, would you like me to explain what's going on?
Rock and roll.
Okay. Dave Varger, our field engineer, has signed off on the as-built plan as being sufficiently complete. The only items he had outstanding leading into this meeting that have been taken care of, and I have the as-built plan over here on the side. The stop line has been added to the plan, and the as-built now have the engineer of record and the surveyors' stamps and signatures and documents. So that's been done. There's a motion to that effect offered in the staff report, and then there's one other item that they're asking for in accordance with Planning Board rules and regulations, and that is to reduce the existing surety that is presently in the amount of $14,618.95, and to reduce that to $4,160, which would be, it would be pursuant to Section 36532, release of lots or security, subsection C, and that reads, "An amount of money to be determined by the Planning Board, but not less than $10 per linear foot of roadway, shall be deposited in a savings account in a bank in Georgetown in the name of the town for a period of one year after release of all lots and until road is accepted by vote of the town meeting to cover the repairs and to correct problems." So.
When did we collect Palmer Lane, is that a private roadway?
No.
That's, that was, I wasn't in on Palmer Lane, so I have no idea, that was intended to be a public roadway?
Yeah.
Okay, and did, the town hasn't accepted that, right?
No, no, they're, they're trying to work towards it, they were trying to do it last year, and they ran out of time relative to the annual town meeting, but there is, is calculated, you measure it on the as-built plan, there's 416 linear feet of roadway, times $10, $4,160.
And why wouldn't we just keep the surety?
Uh, no, that, well, the surety right now is 14,000.
Okay, and so we're keeping the 41?
41, yeah, that would be the one-year maintenance.
That's enough to cover it?
Yeah.
And keep us in 36532, release of lots or surety.
Yeah.
I understand, so step one is, to accept the as-built plan?
Yes, and that's.
And step two is to release the funds?
Correct.
Open the surety, so, does anybody have this, do you guys have it?
Yeah, there's a, there's a motion, and, sorry, it doesn't have capitalized draft motion there, but.
Well, it says, "I move to accept Palmer Lane."
Yeah, I move to accept the Palmer Lane as-built plan entitled roadway as-built plan, tax map, 10 lot 15, 210th Street, Georgetown, MS.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept Palmer Lane as-built plan, all in favor, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to need to, and by lieu of that, we sign the Mylars.
No, the Mylar, it's not a Mylar, it's the as-built plan, it doesn't need to be signed.
Need to be recorded?
Technically, it doesn't.
Doesn't need to be, oh, okay, doesn't need to be signed, good, I like it, in that case, how about surety, folks?
Excuse me, no, I just remembered, with that Palmer Lane, is that, the last time I looked at the registry, they only registered one or two pages?
Of the decision?
Yes, yeah, what happens to all the other? That we had?
Pages of the decision? We have that on record, I mean, what we're doing now is pretty much finalizing it, it will move, from this point, it will move towards the acceptance process, so.
Is that our, is that our process, though?
Yeah. We will recommend for the, the fall town meeting, if they're going to, if the board of selectmen will accept this particular road for consideration for public acceptance for the fall, otherwise, it would have to wait till the spring.
Right.
But till, what are you saying, the decision itself is not recorded at the registry?
Not completely, they missed out on the third page.
How many pages was the decision? I didn't sign it.
There was like six or seven pages to this, and they only.
Yeah, there was, the reason for that page, that had to do with that affordable housing aspect, which is, which has now been formalized and finalized.
But it's not registered, right, so is there?
Yeah, but the, the only reason that page.
It was two things on that page besides.
Yeah, but the only reason it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't finalized, that issue was not finalized when the, when the decision was recorded, I don't know what the story was there, because I wasn't here.
I wasn't, I was recused.
We never got the story.
I was recused.
But, however, the important aspect, the town did get the check, Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust did get the amount of money just this spring.
Oh, what's the important thing?
Yeah, they got the money.
With, with, with that in mind, I'll accept the motion to reduce the existing surety for Palmer Lane subdivision from $14,618.95 to $4,160.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What was the amount now, 14, how much of a check are you writing?
It's going to, the final amount.
The reduction, it reduces from 14,000 to, to.
To 4,000.
4,160.
Oh, 4,100, okay.
Are we good?
4,160.
All right, I added 41,000 and then what is?
Ah, you're going up there.
And we're just, and we're holding that until the Palmer Lane is, is approved.
Yeah.
And Tommy.
Yeah, a year after it's accepted, so.
Okay.
Everybody ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Great.
Then we have.
Did you guys have a, a, a signature page for the appointment for CPC, that was one of the first things they gave us?
Yeah, I signed it.
You signed it, and did it come back? Or did it all just?
Yeah.
I think it went back to you.
Well, I can't find it.
Is this it?
Oh, is that it? Okay, that needs another signature, I think.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
So you didn't get, yeah.
I didn't see it.
Great, okay. And can we take a two-minute break? Just a two-minute break. And we're back now.
Immortal souls would be freed, except for probably Harry.
What happened, I missed, I missed the discussion.
I was just complimenting.
You got all the actions, I got all the one, all the action items.
The way he organizes the information.
Oh, it's far as this.
For each public hearing.
I love it.
And this.
And they have all the packets and everything already.
Within each one of these lines is a, is a tremendous amount of work and.
Enormous amount of work behind it.
Does Avery help you with this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, she's amazing.
That's good.
Hey, I do want to mention that I got everything done for the general code, and we're going to be getting our estimate. Yeah, I did, I did, I did preface it, please consider, you know, doing all this work for us, so, we're waiting to get that estimate, but we're fine with the money, and we're going to be fine with having the money appropriated, so that we'll be able to accomplish it. We also, the assessing department is going to share in our MyMap contract.
Excellent.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
$2,500.
Wow.
That's good.
When he, when he offered 50%, I said, you don't.
Yeah.
Concom didn't throw in a couple of bucks, they use it too, don't they?
Yeah.
Next year.
Maybe next year. We can lease it to them.
Just charge.
Yeah, surcharge for the use of it.
Actually, it used to be a five-way split.
That's the way it was set up, to be shared, yeah.
And then everybody fell out of it, and we ended up picking up the whole table.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, and the thing is, it's all right if they drop out of it, but their money comes to our account.
Yeah, right.
Then we just have to put it in our budget, and it just comes, I mean, it all comes out of the same coffers.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's using it incredibly.
I know, I, where I use it.
They're doing another flyover, too, and.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we're going to be in on that.
Thanks.
Have you got into using it at all?
No, I'd like to, though.
It's very simple, it's, they've improved on it.
It's gotten much better. And we have access here, or is it just public access?
Public, yeah.
Public access.
Public, anybody who uses.
You mean Google Maps, or?
No, it's MyMap. Well, I'm at order, but it's MyMap.
MyMap, it is.
Send me a link.
It shows you pictometry and.
Why don't you, why don't you, why don't you review us, for us, three minutes?
Yeah.
MyMap. MyMap 101.
Right here.
We don't need to just, what it, what it uses for.
What is it, and why, why is it better?
No, Google is, it's great, you know, and you have historical photographs, you can go back, aerials, you know, go backwards and forwards, and, you know, it's great, but every town today has a GIS system specific to their community, so you have all kinds of layers of data, you know, you have all your wetland data, your zoning data, site-specific data for every single lot, you can measure everything, you can do all kinds of stuff with it.
You can get it down to seeing the people on there.
Yeah, you can add, you can add layers, you can subtract layers, you know, you know.
And you're junking your yard, you could make it grow.
It's not live, though, it's, like you said, it's a flyover.
It's a flyover, you know, we did, there was a flyover done, and that's our most up-to-date right now, and that's 2017, we're going to do another one in the spring, next spring, so that's.
Before the trees leaf out.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying. You get a good clear view of what is actually out there, if you do it, you know, post-May in this area, all you see is jungle.
It's green.
Jungle, yes, that is what you see.
Welcome to the jungle, you don't see anything, so you, just certain, and you, you've got to hope for the best day to do that flyover, and what they do, they fly over, they can fly over New England, you know, and be contracted from a vast area, when they did the 17 one, that included all of the towns in this region in most of southern New Hampshire, all done in one day.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, and it's, it's really progressed over the last 20 years.
You get the assessor's vision sheets as well, so you can.
So all the overlay districts, all of them.
When they used to do this in the 80s, it would cost $100,000 to do it, you know, and it was intense, and it was all black and white, today, they're doing it under contract, and it's costing communities $2,000, $3,000, it's amazing how, and, and the quality is.
And they're using extraordinary cameras, a great, so, one shot would be.
A resolution.
Probably going to use drones.
Oh, yeah, well, drones are very, very excessive, really, you know, nobody, they don't, you're in the backyard, now they can fly over and.
Yeah, they get right in there.
John, how's, how's the map for, did Merrimack Valley get back to you about creating the map for the unaccepted streets?
Yeah, but, you know, the only reason that whole issue has been put aside, this is because I'm busy, and.
Sure, sure.
But we're real, we are really only dealing with three remaining roadways that Peter's interested in getting accepted, as we went over before, anything beyond those three, that would be our efforts, he has explicitly informed me that he doesn't have the money to improve roadways on the present status, and the year-in, year-out maintenance that goes on, but, you know, certain, as far as future paving is concerned, that would be the effective abutters that live along those ways, having to do the work and pay for it themselves, and then move for those roadways that do get improved in that manner to become public ways and accepted by the town, that's.
They'd have to bring them up to a certain.
Yeah, and the one we were dealing with, there wasn't any happy news involved with that, they had a meeting amongst the property owners, and they decided.
Have they run, or mohawk?
Yeah, and they decided they weren't going to participate. Well, so that's really what it is, there's a bunch of road, there are a bunch of roadways out there that, they're.
What's our next one on the list?
Private, I'm looking.
Is that, was it long?
Longview.
Longview?
Yeah.
Longview?
And I.
Which has been there forever.
Maureen is one of them, I haven't listed, we'll, we'll get back on that.
Longview's probably the, the longest one.
I'd like to wait until Labor Day, because we're not going to be able to do anything for the 10th, and then we're not going to be able to do anything for the 14th, other than administrative stuff with plans, so we'll jump.
I'm just thinking for Springtown meeting, not even for, I'm thinking for Springtown.
And that's what we will definitely accomplish, along with a few other things, but once we get all these projects out of the way, you know, this is, this is what we really live for and, you know, have to do, you know.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, you know.
Speaking of what we live for, Cambridge Port decision, do we have that?
Yes, yeah, right here, yeah.
This is the original.
And that's the original?
And that has that revision date you wanted, wanted put on there as the final item.
Right, the only, the only thing I saw.
There's page two, I believe, in the, the last page, I did attach every important document that goes with that decision.
So there's the first signature, and then there was another signature page? Did you say two signature pages?
Yeah, the, the last page of the actual decision.
Oh, it's, yeah, yeah. Page seven.
Page seven, that's one. And then there's two quick ones after that, it's, we need extension executed for 103A Lakewood and Turning Leaf, for their extension request.
Form H extensions, we need to vote?
Yeah, 103A Lakewood Drive, and I have, these are all executed Form H's.
Oh, let me take a peek.
You know, and really, if it wasn't for Andrea, I'd never be able to keep up with this.
Fall apart, right?
So that.
I'm glad you're letting her do that for you.
She's extraordinary in her capacity, she's really.
That's great, I'm glad.
Come a long way, and she's working as hard as she can, I think, that's the thing, everybody's working as hard as they can, because this economy is requiring it of everybody, you know, it's like, all hands on deck, full steam ahead.
It really belies the, the common meme that government workers are slackers and, it's an, when I was in Hanscom, these people worked.
Oh, yeah. Or you will be shot.
Seriously, there's a sense of, of, I don't know if the word is duty, but you have a, you have a big responsibility when you work for, for a town or for the feds.
So, at this point, how do you feel, folks, about making a motion to grant the Form H extension of time for subdivision of land at 103A Lakewood Drive to September 30th?
Can I make a motion?
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
So, motion on the floor to grant the Form H extension to the definitive subdivision at 103A Lakewood Drive, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes, no nays, one abstention, so that was four, four, four yeses, no nos, and one abstention.
You got it.
Okay, I got it right, right? Good, you can sign, sign away.
And then the, the only remaining one is Turning Leaf.
Yeah, that's, I, I saw that one, and I'm, I'm saying, huh?
Yeah, that's.
I'm just saying, huh? What, what, what do we? I'm, I'm.
They want an extension to get the rest of the money.
Request that the time for action by the Georgetown Planning Board on a definitive plan in bond termination with a plan entitled Turning Leaf Subdivision shall be extended to no later than June, September 30th, and didn't we just do that tonight?
Turning Leaf?
Not the Turning Leaf.
What have we done? Oh, that was Palmer.
Palmer.
Turner, oh, Turning Leaf?
Why are they asking?
This doesn't even fit.
This is, just because they, they're not finished with the paperwork with Conservation Commission, and this is the last remain, this is the last remaining surety.
How does that hold us up? I don't understand, but that's, that's Concom.
No, I know, I know it's Concom, but it's one of those final sign-offs that has to be signed off.
Before we can.
Before we can review it.
Sign it, come on.
Somebody want to make a motion? Motion?
They, they're amenable to it, they, they fully agree with this, what happened was the engineer didn't realize that he had to go to Concom to get this final, it's the same thing that's been going on at Little Hill, so, they're closer to getting it done, actually.[1780.62]
I'll accept the motion for Form H extension for, and this is, no, this one isn't. This is Turning Leaf Subdivision.
Bon, bon termination.
To September 30th.
I make a motion?
The motion's made. Is there a second? Motion made a second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Yay, scribe.
Yay, scribe.
Go scribe.
But we don't have new dates for both of these.
We don't have new dates for.
September 30th.
Well, those are extensions.
July 10th.
Yeah, this, this is really more formality.
It's on the spreadsheet, yeah.
This just gives us a chance to.
Yeah, my neighbors.
Extend, extend the decision date. And I'm bumming out here, I had a little piece of paper that I was writing all the, all the extend, the, I was writing all of the continuations on, and I've lost it.
You found this.
I'll be right.
Yeah.
Yes, I found this, John. I found this, absolutely. This is a new continuation. So, I'll set with that. I don't believe there's anything else. Oh, there was one thing, the discussion of courts and lanes. And we don't have any.
We already kinda discussed some of the issues of courts and lanes earlier.
Yeah, we've already discussed this.
Well, is there more?
We have, and we haven't.
What do you, what do you got in mind?
Just wanted to look at it, and I wanted to remind everybody, and I don't have any graphics to work off of, but I wanted to remind everybody of a vote that was taken, and I wanna say, I forget when exactly the date was that we changed this all to special permit. And it was for a good reason, that we went from just a basic revote to a four-vote supermajority and made this all special permit. I wanted to, I wanna just impress upon you the gravity of it, and the reason that it is a special permit now is, and I think we touched on this earlier tonight. Before, there was this animal called courts and lanes. Folks that wanted to develop their backland, and imagine just your geometric shape of somebody that wanted to develop their backland, they had to go through the definitive subdivision. Basically, they had to have a 50-foot right-of-way, 26 feet of pavement, a grass strip on one side, a sidewalk on the other, the whole nine yards.
A lot more requirements, yeah.
Big, big requirements.
So they didn't do it?
So they didn't do it. Well, what, no, they did do it. They came to the board, and what they would do is, they would say, this is a definitive, and I would like this 155 waivers. And then the board would do it. This is older Georgetown, you can't deny that it would happen. And it happened, and the board granted waiver after waiver after waiver. So sometime around 2000, the board said, well, let's make this, let's, let's get away from that. Let's create courts and lanes. We'll have this set of standards that are, I don't wanna call it substandard, but they're new set of standards for smaller, smaller things.
Less demanding.
Less demanding, thank you, good, good way to put it. And they created those, and they came up with the, of the, the sizes of this, 18 feet wide, two-foot straps on either side. You could have a T-type turnaround, you didn't necessarily have to have this 150-foot bulb at the end of it, and reduced requirements, if you will. All well and good. The problem that I see is it's creeped. It's, it's creeping down and down and down, and we're getting further and further away from those requirements. And I hope that maybe we'll be able to find a graphic and send it out to, to the board, or we could just look at, look up courts and lanes, and you'll be able to see that the standards that are there, those were set down for a reason. Those already are, like Tillie said this evening, those already are pretty much pre-wavered. They really detract from, take away from the subdivision standards that we have for the full-blown subdivision. And so when applicants come in, they ask for reduction, reduction, reduction. They use older subdivisions, older courts, that maybe were for one, one lot.
Well, you proved that, so why won't you prove this?
Yes, as, as he was saying, often, there's lots of.
Oh, there's tons of this, there's tons, hundreds, hundreds, they're all over the place.
All right.
And just keep that in mind. What we might wanna do is, I'm sorry, but what we might wanna do is, we might wanna look at courts and lanes, the, the actual regulations that we have.
Let's do a walkthrough.
And we may wanna revise them. We may look at them and say, well, you know what? Why do we wanna change them? I don't know. Maybe we wanna get rid of them entirely, which we can't, we have every, every authority to do. I don't know. What do you think, Tillie?
What I was gonna do, add to what you said, what I said before to the applicant, right now, we're down to the worst parcels that you could possibly build on.
Right.
They are very sensitive. We're down to the ditty gritty.
Because there's not much left to build on.
Right. So it's, it's really different than when it was first introduced.
Right.
You know, and that's what I see, anyway. Very complicated, when you're talking topography, eight-feet-stripped lot, you know, that's scary.
Yeah, Ian landed this at such a premium.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there are quite a, quite a few people that are scouring the assessing maps all the time to figure out, you know, how can it be done? And we're dealing with three of them right now.
Right.
You know, that one, you know, one off of West Main Street, you know, is a perfect example. That takes a lot of creativity and, and know-how to see the potential there.
Right.
You know, that, that just doesn't hit you automatically by the average person looking at maps. It doesn't hit you that, hey, it's a bill of life.
And they take just as long as a, as a 20-yard subdivision.
And as everybody knows, it causes a lot of controversy with the butters.
One of the things that we have done, I haven't done it very recently, is do sight, sightwalks. And I think that West Main Street project down on, is it Rock Pond?
Yeah.
Would be, that would be a good one to walk through, because.
I did, I went down there.
But how far can you walk back, though? Isn't it like wetlands or quickly?
I drove, I drove down the driveway. No, it's, it's, there's a, they're.
There's a house there on the, on the lay.
The existing house is right down by the pond. You drive right by that. You must have been in some other place, 'cause I knew you'd have a trespass on someone's land. It was the driveway. That's right, I must have been.
Nobody's there.
I mean, we.
I was afraid to drive it to go, because it was.
We really shouldn't talk in any particulars, in a general manner.
Yeah, I'm sure you weren't there. You were somewhere.
I was walking my dog by. But my point, yeah, my, no, my, my point was sightwalks, because they're focused, and they give you a chance to really look at, what's the impact of this project gonna be? This, the Turning Leaf Sightwalk, original Sightwalk, I, I couldn't conceive that they could put that development there. It was ledge, it was wet, it was in, it was absolutely wonderful. It was beautiful. I thought, oh, God, this would be too bad. But it is what it is. That's not, it's, I, I felt for the fellow today who said, it's gonna change my neighborhood, it's gonna change my backyard.
Yeah, but you.
I live next to where Ted's junkyard was, so, I mean.
But we can't address that, he just doesn't like the look of it. It's kind of a bore.
Or that you, you can't stop people from building as long as they build within the code. I mean, that's.
And as, as you implied, you know, the, the building of a house is good.
People, people, it's, it's, it's strange to me, because I've been doing this for so long that there are a lot of people that don't understand the basic premise and the reasons why people do what they do. You know, somebody wants to develop their land.
They have that right to do it.
They have statutes for that. They have local bylaws, and, you know, if somebody is following the local bylaws and the public hearing process, they're entitled to them. We can't approve anything that isn't legally approvable.
Right.
Not that we can't accept the plan.
And because it's a special permit, there is many, many more requirements than a regular subdivision.
Can I just add, can I just add to, when we're talking about courts and lanes, there, there's a huge green element involved with that, because you're allowing for the development of land with the least amount of impact when it comes to roadway surface. More impervious than what's necessary adds to so much flooding, you know, so much ruining.
Well, that's, that's exactly why I was thinking that maybe we should open up regulations for that, and if people want courts and lanes, instead of asking us to go from the regulation 18 feet with the two-foot shoulders, then all courts and lanes will be pervious pavement.
Standard subdivisions are a thing of the past.
Not a problem, too, well.
Except that the maintenance, that you have to do it.
And that's what they have maintenance for their water, water, soft-water facilities. I get it, absolutely. Every, every year, John will go down and pour a bottle of water on, and if it doesn't go down, then they have to rip their driveway out, that's all.
No, but, you.
I'm just checking out.
Open space subdivisions that we have, OSIDs, those are, those are the only type of subdivisions you're gonna have. You're never gonna have standard subdivisions, not in any communities that do have open space development. And what does it do? It helps keep more trees in place, and it lessens the amount of linear feet of roadway that just, you know, more road, the wider they are, the more flooding is caused.
It's cheaper for the developer. Develop is love, because it's cheap. It's cheaper, you save a lot of money.
Yeah, but nationwide, you know, if, in these big roadways that were put in place, bad planning, you know, for a long period of time. And it didn't come from planners so much as it came from fire departments and DPWs.
They wanted this way.
You know, requiring structured drainage conditions in roadways built, when 90% of the roads are more, and this country are sheet flow. It worked pretty good. And, you know, a lot of the environmental impacts are dispersed in the environment, because, you know, studies have proven that, you know, the plant, plants do well in grabbing whatever comes their way, and eating it, and growing with it, petroleum products. That's why you have rain gardens now designed into commercial parking areas. You know, whatever's dripping off, the cars that are parked in the parking lot, they're rain gardens, and the plants do.
Usually rarely grass grow.
Yeah, and they, the plants do really well. They utilize those materials as fertilizer, and they're absorbed into the plants, and.
Reused.
Plants grow. That's why you have.
Breaking down, breaking the roots.
Low-impact development is rain gardens, you know, just sheet flowing into these, just, you know, these low-lying areas within parking lot design. It's its own art form, it's its own science, and it really works well. And breaking up things that would, you know, other people, or many people think are environmental hazards. You know, petroleum products going into, into these rain gardens are utilized by the plants.
And it looks pretty.
They do really well by them.
So what, Chairman, what do we wanna do to?
Um, it's up to the board. Do you wanna open up, do you wanna look at them? John can provide us with some information as far as.
It's after 10.
I, you know what?
Oh.
No, for another meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think it's worth.
How about for like, for September?
Yeah, yeah.
Perhaps we could, would you like to open it up for, for our regulatory changes? Or should we look at it first, and?
How about a review first?
Yeah, how about, how about an educational forum?
Sounds good, yeah.
I gotta, I, I need two board member volunteers. The town is involved with a land court matter that, they're going, yeah, July 15th. And I just want some assistance input from a couple of board members in the review of it. We're, we're dealing with the fire chief and the police chief, trying to, you know, give advice to town council in regard to this case. So.
When is it, John?
If you're available, I don't, if you're available next week for a day, I, I wanna come in. I was gonna be on vacation, but I'll come in for that, and.
It's July 15th.
That has nothing to do with it.
No, but what it really has to do with is giving advice as to minimal standards that we would require for this, this roadway that's being proposed for development.
Are you, did you say the fifth or the 15th?
Well, the court date, the land court date is 15th.
Right.
And I'd really like to formulate a recommendation to town council sometime next week.
Which is a four-day week, uh, three-day week.